This is the appointed time, we have a quorum. So I call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Public Accounts Committee. This is the first public hearing on Audit Report Number Eighty-One, Chapter Three, titled Maintenance and Modernization of Lifts and Escalators in Public Rental Housing Estates. We have the following witnesses attending today's hearing. Ms. Winnie Ho, Secretary for Housing. Ms. Rosanna Law, Director of Housing. Mr. Michael Hong, Assistant Director of Housing Department. Mr. Derek Law, Chief Manager of Housing Department. Ms. Carmen Chan, Senior Building Services Engineer and Building Services Management. So, thank you for coming, members. Does any of you need to declare interest in relation to today's public hearing? Ms. Carmen Chan, I'm a member of the Housing Authority. Yes, any other declarations? If not, then let me also declare that I am also a member of the Housing Authority. Please put it on record. Let's invite Professor Nelson Lam, Director of Audit, to walk us through today's hearing. Thank you, Chairman. I thank the administration for inviting us to the public hearing on Chapter Three of Report Number Eighty-One. I'm going to brief members on the maintenance and modernization of lifts and escalators in public rental housing estates. That is Chapter Three of the Audit Report Number Eighty-One. First of all, I am grateful to the Housing Department for fully cooperating with our investigation process. There are four parts to this report. Part One sets out the introduction and background of our work. As of the thirtieth of June twenty twenty-three, the Housing Department is responsible for maintaining six thousand and fifty-six lifts and two hundred and seventy-seven escalators. In the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three financial year, the total maintenance cost stood at seven hundred and sixty million dollars. The Housing Department also takes forward on a continuous basis a lift modernization program to replace the parts of aged lifts. Between twenty eighteen, nineteen and twenty twenty-two, twenty-three financial year, altogether, twenty-seven contracts were awarded to lift contractors involving three hundred and eighty-two lifts, totaling six hundred and fifty million dollars. Between, in since twenty twenty and twenty eighteen respectively, the Housing Department has also implemented enhancement works for as lifts and escalators to install the latest safety devices. The findings are set out in Parts Two to Four of the report. Part Two refers to the maintenance of lifts and escalators. Part Three relates to the lift modernization program. And Part Four, other safety enhancement measures for lifts and escalators. In light of the findings of the audit, we have made twenty recommendations to the Housing Department. The Housing Department has accepted the recommendations. I am grateful for the cooperation. Thank you, Director. Ms. Winnie Ho, Secretary for Housing, will now have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank the audit for their work on the maintenance and modernization of lifts and escalators in public rental housing estates, as well as the invaluable views put forward. I also thank the Public Accounts Committee for giving us an opportunity to explain the details in the report, as well as putting forward improvement measures. The Housing Department agrees with the report and accepts the recommendations therein. We will continue to closely monitor the implementation progress of the improvement measures to ensure that the audit's recommendations can be fully and effectively implemented. As of the June twenty twenty-three, the Housing Department was responsible for managing one hundred and ninety-three public housing estates, including six thousand and fifty-six lifts and two hundred and twenty-seven, uh, two hundred and seventy-seven escalators. We understand that lifts and escalators are closely related to people's livelihood. We are not going to relax our effort when it comes to the safety of both in order to reduce the number of down, um, reduce the period of downtime for lifts and escalators. Public housing estates are densely populated. Many visit, uh, many other residents also visit our commercial facilities. The utilization of lifts and escalators in public housing estates therefore, um, is inevitably higher than private estates. But according to contractors, the malfunctioning rate has been kept low. There is fewer than one incident in every six months for each lift and escalator managed by the Housing Department. The overall default rate has been on a decline as well. As a matter of fact, uh, for many of these incidents, they relate to human behavior, such as deliberately blocking or, um, bumping into the car doors. There are also instances in which the car doors will be blocked and the command will be triggered to suspend the lift operation to ensure safety. These cases are not classified as equipment failure. In majority of these cases, upon inspection, the suspended lift services can be resumed in a short period of time. In fact, only zero point seven percent of these cases had the downtimes longer than two days. As mentioned in the report, the, uh, for nine, more than ninety-nine percent of, um, lift incidents and ninety-eight percent of escalator incidents, the they could resume services within two days. This is due to effective monitoring of the Housing Department on the contractors as well as, um, maintenance requirements are more stringent than the law is required. For example, periodic maintenance is required of the contractor once a week, that's four times more than the statutory requirement of monthly maintenance. More frequent periodic maintenance can help put in place preventive maintenance and ensure stability and service safety. The Housing Department also conduct regular, uh, also conducts regular assessments and monitors the performance of contractors, including supplies, checks, and additional inspections to ensure that, uh, the maintenance performance is up to standard. In fact, the original manufacturers are responsible for the maintenance of lifts and escalators. They are fully responsible when it comes to lift safety. They also provide direct support in the provision of spare parts and technical support. Now, the Housing Department manages a large number of lifts and escalators. But as mentioned in the report, the majority of these, um, shutdown cases are minor in nature. They are not classified as incidents reportable to the EMSD. The Housing Department has launched a lift modernization program since nineteen eighty-eight. So far, uh, one thousand five hundred lifts in sixty public housing estates have been modernized. Every year, the Housing Department conducts assessments of lifts over twenty years of age and conducts condition-based lift modernization. Um, unlike many private estates, we undertake lift modernization in a more comprehensive manner. All the parts, um, in the lift installation will be replaced, um, with new ones. And there'll be thorough inspection and overhaul of the lift machine room and lift shafts. We also review and streamline procedures to shorten downtimes due to lift works to ensure that lift safety levels can be enhanced. On top of the LM program, we also follow the EMSD guidelines to install the latest safety devices for lifts and escalators. The Housing Department requires a contractor to dismantle the escalator for inspection and replacement of worn parts. We, they are also required to follow the EMSD guidelines to install the latest safety devices. These are all additional requirements, um, on top of the statutory requirements. Most of the escalators under Housing Department's management have been retrofitted with safety devices. Uh, the remaining will complete the retrofitting work within twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And we have also been adopting the state-of-the-art energy, uh, uh, technology and innovation to enhance work safety and efficiency and then improve property management. We signed a memorandum of understanding with ASTRI, Applied Science Technology Research Institute of Hong Kong, to build a strategic partnership so that the technology can be deployed to, um, provide the solutions on property management. On lift maintenance, ASTRI will conduct research so as to deploy artificial intelligence in conducting predictive lift maintenance. AI will also be leveraged to analyze the Internet of Things data to effectively predict malfunctioning of lifts. This system can, uh, is compatible with different, uh, lift models and remote real-time monitoring can be put in place to predict defaults accurately to enhance the quality of estate management. There are diff, uh, there are a number of directions. That means that we will be deploying and researching more, researching more tech, um, technology, we will make better use of the IoT sensors. Uh, we will educate the public about correct use of lifts. We'll also go after deliberate vandalism. Um, that fifteen points will be incurred and the notice will be, uh, issued. We'll also collaborate with the sector in enhancing the quality of, um, the works of the industry. As always, the Housing Department will continue to provide safer lifts and escalator services in a quality manner. As for details, and the details of the report, we'll be happy to take questions from, um, members.
All right, we will start taking evidence from member, uh, from witnesses. Uh, Ms. Yuen Su Young will be the lead member. She will have twenty minutes, and then for other members, fifteen minutes, questions and answers included. Ms. Yuen Su Young will kick us off. The Public Accounts Committee has selected this chapter as the Housing Department is managing one hundred and ninety-three housing estates, and there are seven hundred and seventy-four, um, uh, four thousand five hundred tenants in these estates. I think that it's a matter of, um, public safety and personal safety. That is the justification for choosing this chapter to hold a public hearing so that we can strive to enhance the safety and management assessment, scoring of lifts and escalators managed by the Housing Department. That way, we can offer more efficient lift and safe lift and escalator services to the public. I also thank the Director of Audit for detailing, um, their audit work and giving us their views and recommendations. Now, the, the topic may sound rather straightforward, but the Housing Department has different divisions and teams to oversee lifts and escalators. For example, we have district man, maintenance offices and public ser, property service agents. And at the headquarters level, there is also the CST. That means that they are, they, they liaise with, um, the regional and district offices. Apart from that, internally, there is a committee. The Housing Department also requires the contractor to provide a site, or logbook records, um, not to mention the assessments, reports, evaluation reports with scores accorded. But all in all, we want to make sure that there is proper monitoring. And for aged lifts and escalators, they should be replaced. Now, the audit report sets out every step along the procedures. But the question is, is it really necessary to set up all the divisions, sections, committees to oversee the six thousand lifts and escalators? I think this is, um, the crux of the matter, and this is a matter of the public's concern. Uh, for example, we see that there is a focus inspection team. There is a head. Like I said, apart from the district ma, maintenance office, you also have surprise checks, additional inspections. And then the independent head also, um, leads surprise or additional inspections. So there are so many inspections. I don't have concrete evidence, but I believe that whenever an inspection takes place, the lifts will have to be shut down for some time. The suspension is already a nuisance to the public. And as you know, in many public housing estates, there isn't a landing on every floor. If the lift is suspended, uh, elderly residents will need to climb stairs, and that's inconvenient. So I hope that the procedures can be streamlined and technology can be deployed. Uh, in fact, the secretary just mentioned that, uh, technology will be used, AI will be used. Is there a centralized system in the back office so that with the use of the AI, you have all the data ready to find out when a lift is to be replaced? Can you make it scientific? Because at the moment, we learn about the basket of factors in deciding whether the lift is more, uh, is to be modernized. But on top of that, um, uh, is there any other consideration? We'll come to the LM program in due course. This is just the beginning of the hearing. But all we want is a more streamlined set of procedures so as to enhance efficiency and safety of lift and escalators. So that there won't be duplication of efforts in inspection and maintenance so that we can shorten the downtimes. I think this is our goal. Now we understand what the problem is, since you've provided written information to the questions we put. We need to streamline procedures to enhance efficiency. Chairman, let me first put some questions in relation to Part One. I'm reading from the introduction. That is, the lockbook records should be kept up to three years. Now, I understand that, um, there is this requirement on the contractor's concern. And in two point three-one, uh, you will see that there is this requirement of keeping, uh, lockbooks. Uh, we're not sure whether you have gone paperless. Have you automated the process? Have you prepared electronic locks for us to conduct analysis? Now, the requirement is that, um, records should be kept. But my question is, uh, will you go paperless to help, uh, with analysis? Secretary.
I thank Ms. Young for the comment. Whether we can streamline procedures as we strive for improvement, we'll definitely take note of that. On digitizing, law-keeping, we definitely agree that this will be more effective. With electronic records, we can conduct analysis. Uh, we can also check for incidents. Uh, in fact, we have begun this exercise. For details, uh, let me give the floor to the Director. Thank you, Secretary. I understand from Ms. Young's remarks, um, that we must streamline the procedures to enhance effi, uh, efficiency. I am all for that. I am new to this position. My colleagues likewise are new to the positions as well. They are new to lift and escalators maintenance. So we'll definitely consider enhancing efficiency and addressing duplication. To answer your question on two point three-one and Part One on the Keeping of Lockbooks, we keep records. That means we have worksheets in relation to weekly and monthly maintenance and inspections. However, at the moment, uh, records are kept in hard copies. It's not efficient. We hope that by the first quarter of next year, we will be able to make every colleague use, um, digital logs. Each, each colleague will have a, an account. And following that, they can keep their own records, uh, on their own accounts. But when it comes to lift and escalator repair and estate management, other colleagues will need to catch up with the technology as well. So we don't have, uh, a blanket commencement date. After creating accounts and lockbooks for these, um, colleagues, we will put them to use as quickly as possible so that there won't be omissions in the future. Second, there will be more data for us to analyze the maintenance needs.
Thank you, um, Ms. Law. Next, um, Ms. Young. Well, on, um, one point five again. We are all concerned about incidents because between twenty oh-six and twenty ten, well, for mechanical, um, problems, there were a hundred and seventy-three cases, um, involving some twenty-two casualties, in particular, uh, for the Fuzi estate in Taipu. In, uh, well, there was, um, um, a fall of the lifts, uh, and that also gave rise to a lot of public concern. And, uh, some twenty people have been injured in the course of these incidents. And therefore, we've been talking about, uh, lift safety and how we can do a good job on, um, lift maintenance. But then, how can we ensure that there will be fewer or less, um, injuries caused by such incidents? So what have you thought about, um, and what will, uh, be done next in order to reduce, uh, the incidence or casualties rate?
Thank you, um, Ms. Young. Well, lift safety has, is something that we have been emphasizing, uh, all along. And of course, uh, when, when there are casualties, of course, we would be, uh, more concerned about that. And therefore, we understand that, uh, lift themselves are very special products because they have their own proprietary, um, they are proprietary products. And therefore, we have been adopting this proprietary maintenance approach. So that's, uh, for electronic, uh, spare parts and so on. They are very important, and therefore, uh, we cannot afford to have any omissions. And therefore, we have always adopted this proprietary maintenance approach so that the manufacturers will be responsible for maintenance. So that whether it's, uh, the mechanical spare parts or components, um, they will be, uh, maintained by the original manufacturer, and that's very important. We have also noticed that, um, there would also be replacement of the old lifts so that for the old motors, uh, or spare parts, once they are taken off, if they are still intact, then they would be kept. So that, uh, when they are from the same brand or model, when there are needs for spare parts to be replaced, and if those, um, are still in working conditions, then that would also save a lot of time. And public education is also very important because very often when there are lifts, uh, incidents, about twenty percent of those are involved, um, human factors or, uh, or inclement weather. And therefore, to, uh, use them properly. And then, and also for escalators, uh, well, for human errors causing incid, incidents, um, that would be, uh, more often. For example, foreign objects are falling onto the escalators and so on. So such, um, work will continue. And I think, uh, the Director would also like, like to add. Yes, Director?
Yes, in Para One Point One Five, uh, we're talking about some, um, well, within a matter of four to five years, uh, there were a hundred and seventy-three, um, incidents, uh, involving some seventy-three, um, injuries. And of course, um, that's not desirable. And also in light of that, uh, the government also proposed, um, this, um, uh, new, uh, lifts and escalators, uh, safety ordinance to replace the old one. And after the statutory, uh, work has been done, and also on top of that, uh, we have also been monitoring and also we have also, uh, done additional checkups. Uh, I can provide you with the details. Between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three September. So within a matter of about four to five years, in terms of lifts, um, there were three incidents, um. So in a matter of five years, there were three incidents involving injuries. And then for escalators, um, within a five-year period, uh, there were also three incidents involving, uh, injuries. So when compared to the previous records, I think there has been some improvement. And for those injuries, they were not serious, um. So that might involve, uh, the uneven, um, uh, lifts, um, and so on. There was, there was some minor injuries. Yes, Ms. Young?
Yes, uh, thank you for your, for the information provided by the Director. Yes, uh, under Para One Point Eight, uh, was starting from nineteen eighty-eight. You've already introduced the, uh, maintenance program. So if you said that you've been able to reduce the number of incidents between nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three, so as far as the department is concerned, which step has been most effective in reducing the number of, um, injuries? Yes, um, Director? Um, Chairman, well, Para One Point Eight, One Point Nine is about the modernization program. And that's about the replacement of the aged, um, lifts. And after they have been replaced, and of course, the safety and reliability would also be enhanced. But then what's most important is the regular maintenance, uh, that's about the weekly, uh, inspection. That's, um, over and above what is required under the law. And also, as we said just now, we are talking about, um, more internal monitoring. And precisely because we had such, um, inspection in place, uh, the incidence rate has been much lower. So as the, um, Secretary just said, uh, when it comes to maintenance by the Housing Authority, we have been doing quite a remarkable job. And that's also one of the reasons why we've been able to reduce the number of incidents. Yes, Ms. Young? Can you see what are the main reasons for the injuries? I'll see if my colleague can supplement. Yes, Mr. Hong?
Yes, Chairman, all along. Well, compared to the territory figure, our incidence rate is on the low side. Well, mainly because there was a uneven, uh, car door to, um, the opening, so, uh, people might be tripped. So as the Director said, uh, majority of the cases involve very minor injuries, uh, because they just tripped over. And, um, it's not serious at all. So you're, um, referring to the, um, to the level difference, uh, between the car door and also the, um, the, um, uh, floor, right? Yes.
Yes, that's understandable because if you're talking about, um, the, uh, suspension or downtime of a lift, um, uh, lifts, um, would be replaced, um. Well, sometimes, uh, there would be a level difference, uh, because when the car door opens, uh, sometimes, um, um, it's a little lower than the, uh, floor level. And, uh, it's very common to see people, um, uh, tripped over. But then, um, uh, the passengers would still be worried, um. So in terms of the replacement of spare parts, uh, you would also have to be more targeted in conducting inspection and, um, maintenance in order to enhance safety. You would also have to pay attention to this in order to ensure safety can be enhanced. I would also like to draw your attention to this because in the report, uh, we have not been informed about that. And now, we have been told that, uh, in most of these cases, uh, that's because of the level difference, um, uh, between the car door, uh, or be, uh, and also, um, the, uh, floor. And, uh, people might be tripped over, resulting in injuries. So you don't have to answer this question. All right, Para One Point Six, uh, is about, um, lifts and escalators, uh, maintenance program. And also on the enhancement, uh, works, uh, I'll leave it to the second part of the hearing. But then there is another point that I'd like to ask, is about Table Three. So that's on Performance Pledge. Table Three. So how far trapped passengers rescued within thirty minutes of maintenance personnel's arrival? According to the Housing Department, well, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two, there were ten thousand and three hundred and twenty-six cases of lift breakdown with passing, passengers trapped. In forty cases, the passengers were trapped for more than sixty minutes, ranging from sixty-two to two hundred and six minutes, on average eighty-four minutes. So can you explain why they had to be trapped for such a long time? Because if you say that, uh, personnel would arrive within forty-five minutes or thirty minutes, how come in some cases passengers would have to be trapped, uh, for some two hundred and six minutes, uh, or even over an hour before they are rescued? So, Mr. Hong?
Yes. Well, if you look at those cases first, um, on the longest case involving two hundred minutes, uh, trapping. Well, in fact, um, on that occasion, uh, the lift, uh, was stuck, uh, between two floors. And, uh, when the personnel arrived and opened the, uh, car door, the passengers could not be rescued immediately. And there were ways to, um, uh, find
And there were ways to um uh find tune the level of the car door in order to rescue the passengers. But then, unfortunately, on that occasion, that could not be done. Because there were passengers trapped in the um in the lift car. And we could see that the passengers were safe. And then, we talked to the firemen and then without damaging the um the structure of the lift, the firemen were able to rescue the passengers from the top of the lift car. And in some cases, when we are not able to open the car door right away, we had to wait till the firemen arrive. And well, during the first twenty five minutes, if there were passengers trapped, then we would arrive as soon as possible. And in most cases, they could be rescued within thirty minutes. But then, if the lift car is stuck in between two floors, then in some cases, that would take a bit longer. And we would also monitor the situation or conditions of the passengers inside the lift car. And that would decide on how long it would take.
But then, you're talking about some forty cases in which the passengers were trapped for more than sixty minutes. Is there any way to improve the situation? Yes, um Director, Bureau Director or Assistant Director?
Well, from the time of the passengers being trapped in the lift, it would take twenty five minutes before personnel, the personnel would arrive. In most cases, they would be rescued within sixty minutes. So as you can see, there were some ten thousand three hundred twenty six cases. And only in forty cases were the passengers trapped for more than sixty minutes. And in most of these cases, precisely because the lift car was stuck in between two floors. And this is not very common.
Yes, um Miss Law?
Well, here, the calculation is from the time of the passengers are being trapped. And once he pressed the alarm, then within twenty five minutes, repair and maintenance personnel had to arrive. And they will have to deal with the situation. And if the situation is more straightforward, then the car door can be opened right away and then the passengers can be rescued. But then, as Mister Lo was referring to, well, that's because of the car, the lift car being stuck in between two floors. And the passengers could not just climb up very easily. And on that occasion, we had to wait till after the firemen arrived. And they would also have to climb down from the top of the lift car. And at the same time, we would also have to soothe the emotions of the passengers inside the lift. Well, in such case, where the lift car is stuck in between two floors, we would regard it as a more serious case. But then, in most of these cases, well, if it's not, when the lift car is stuck in between two floors, then we would just try to soothe the passengers while we try to get them out as quickly as possible. And therefore, it would not take that long. So you can also consider using more advanced machinery or equipment to um help the passengers out of the lift car. You don't have to rely on suspension rope to take them out. So can you also find out if such equipment is available?
Yes, let me briefly respond to that suggestion. Well, we are working with S three on the use of new technology. Precisely, we are also looking at data. So that in the day-to-day operation of the lifts, once we detect any irregularities, then we would also do preemptive checking. So it's like installing sensors, so that once you feel that the pulse rate or heartbeat is not normal, then we can also conduct preemptive checking. So that is something that we are looking into.
Yes, Miss Yong, please wait till I um call upon your name. Because other than those who are present at the meeting, we are also live streaming the meeting. And therefore, for the colleague using the camera to pen the member who is speaking, it would take some time before he can pen your face so that the public would know who is speaking. Okay, Miss Yong? Yes, I have no further questions on this chapter. That's what I'd like to say. Next, Miss Khan?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I'd like to look at the report, part three. Well, that's to clarify this for public's understanding. So a hundred ninety three estates involving some six thousand five fifty six lifts and also two hundred seventy seven escalators. And according to note three of the audit's report, it doesn't include the tenant purchase scheme estates. In other words, if some of the units have been sold to the tenants, then they would have to set up their own owners incorporated. And that would be under the purview of the owners incorporated, and that's not covered by the audit report. And private housing estates lifts would also not be covered. And I believe that the number would far exceed the number that we are talking about. And then, in public housing estates for lift safety and also reliability, as the audit report says, that's to provide convenience to the tenants. And we also we also have to ensure safety. And also, we'd like to provide an age-friendly and barrier-free aesthetic environment to the elderly. So that's the whole purpose of having this audit report. And just now, you said that between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty three, there were three incidents involving injuries. And also escalate, there were also three incidents involving escalators causing injuries. So is it um within public housing estates or is it a territory-wide figure? Well, that's um within public housing estates. Thank you. Okay, Para one point five says that the law uh was introduced in light of the incidents involved in the incident in Fuxin Estate in twenty oh eight. And as a result of that, well, both the bureau and also the department undertook to amend the law. And it says that, well, that would set out the clear line of responsibilities. And we have Para A to F. I don't need to read that out. And what's most important is that in terms of the maintenance strategy, the Housing Department is set up in Para one point six, you would adopt you would adopt the proprietary maintenance approach. So that for lifts and escalators, because there are a lot of technical factors. And therefore, the manufacturers or installers would have to be responsible for the term maintenance. And they would also have to provide all types of servicing, maintenance, repair and replacement as the need arises. So in light of the audit report and also some of the discoveries and recommendations, are you still insisting on this proprietary maintenance approach as the right approach?
Yes, as I said in my early reply to Miss Yong's question, what we believe that proprietary maintenance is important. Because if you look at the design, it's a proprietary product. And also for the machine, for the mechanical parts, they are rather complicated. And also for the installation and also testing and also compatibility of spare parts and so on. Each brand and each manufacturer would have its uniqueness. And therefore, to have the original manufacturer doing the maintenance is important. And even under our modernization program, if the lifts have to be replaced, we are going to replace the entire lift. We believe that that would achieve a better result. So that's to ensure lift safety, and it's a very important component of the whole approach. Thank you.
Yes, Miss Khan, thank you for your quest for your reply. My next question is on Para one point one four. It says that right now, within the Housing Department, there are four units. So I'm looking at the structure, the organization structure, that's in Appendix A or Enclosure A. Well, it says that there are four units, one of which is the Estate Management Office that's responsible for this. So that's about escalators and also lift some maintenance. And about forty percent would be directly under that unit. And some sixty percent has been outsourced to private um maintenance agents. And then, in Para one point seven, you talk about some six hundred million dollars for maintenance purposes. So would that cover all these? Yes, Assistant Director?
Yes, Mister Hong? Yes, indeed, a hundred ninety three estates are all covered. So that cost would already cover all the a hundred ninety three estates.
That is, that is whether it's from the, is it the responsibility of the estate management company or is it outsourced to the property management companies? And also, for the organizational structure chart, just then, Miss Yong mentioned that our maintenance and monitoring strategy due to the change in law, the monitoring work has been enhanced and there are increased requirements. That is the first layer of monitoring will be carried out by the DMOs or PSAs. That is thirty percent would be undertaken by DMOs, and that's right, right? So can the department explain the first layer of maintenance? That is the work done by DMOs under the current structure, organizational structure. Um, there's a mark next to it, which states that within housing management offices, there are different districts involved. There are seven district offices. And within those offices, there are various sub-maintenance teams, offices, and property services teams. And the structure doesn't include the C T CSTs, which would be what Miss um Yong mentioned as the second tier of work, which will involve surprise checks and additional checks. Have I made myself clear? That is the first layer is taken undertaken by DMOs to monitor the maintenance strategy. That is maintenance and also the involvement of eleven contractors, the first tier, undertaken by DMS, which will monitor the contractors. And the second layer is that the department has its own CTS to carry out surprise checks. And the third tier is undertaken by the Department Secretary Office of the um Housing Department, which has an independent checking unit to carry out the checking work. I believe this is the three layers of work or tiers of work that appear after the amendment to the legislation. So but under this structure, where is the CSTs? And how would the administration respond to the current division of work? Miss Law, thank you. I would say that on page fifty six, the yellow part is what's covered by the Directive Audit Report. And that is the, uh they are staffed by Housing Department staff. There are one directive Housing and three assistant directors. Since we have hundred thirty three, not ninety three, uh housing estates, so they are divided into different districts like Queichong, Taipu, Kowloon East regions and so forth. And in each region, there are sub-regions like in Queichong region, under it, Shaolik, Lei Moxu, Quaihin, Quaifang estates. So where there is a further division of work. And each housing estate has its own estate management office, uh which will be monitored by the Housing Affairs Managers. So we have different monitoring for each, uh monitoring staff responsible for each housing estate. For, that also covers the lifts and escalators maintenance. In our first line of defense, that is done by the contractors, which will carry out the lift and elevator or escalator maintenance. They are responsible on a weekly basis to che-check on the lifts and also on a quarterly basis as well. Their quarterly report or their periodical report will be shared by the estate manager and also audited by the regional divisions and subdivisions. And member also mentioned that in our various regions, our staff there would also review those reports and carry out checks to monitor our contractors' performance, to see whether they have done the work properly. And the third layer is, as you mentioned, our CSTs. The CSTs are led by our Chief Technical Officer. Um, they involve our staff in the department. And they will work on projects that we think require more attention or because the average score is below what we want them to be. And each contractor on an annual basis will be subject to surprise checks by us. So we don't just believe in the contractors' reports alone or just trust the reports alone. That's how we auditor or monitor our work. Thank you. Miss Ken?
Yeah, thank you for your explanation. So Director says that the first line of defense is the maintenance done by the manufacturers or contractors.
As mentioned, but in paragraph one point six, so so the manufacturers are the same as the contractors, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Miss Ken?
So that's the first line of defense. So that is they'll be responsible for the performance of the lifts. So how can they be held accountable according to the law? In terms of uh one point six A B C, if they violate those points, how are they going to be held accountable? Miss Law?
In the second layer of monitoring or in part two, we will give you more details. Of course, each contractor on a weekly basis, they will have to carry out their routine checks to monitor how the lifts are working and also to carry out daily maintenance work. And also on a quarterly basis, they also need to carry inspections on the safety gears or control devices, the doors where they are working properly and where they are well audited in terms of the performance. And there are also engineers who need to sign off on other inspection records. So daily and quarterly checks will be carried out by technical officers. And the further checks will be carried out by engineers. And every year, we need to make sure that everything is working properly. And there should be emergency repair and on-call services provided. And all these are the checks the contractors have to carry out and also what we monitor them for. Uh but we, by the time we talk about two point seven, we will have a further, more detailed review. Miss Ken, maybe I have not made myself clear. I just want to say in a more general, to know in a more general sense, that if the manufacturers, contractors, uh are they going to be, can they be held liable crim-criminally or on a civil basis? Miss Law? Under the Housing Department, our contractors, should they be found that their performance is below our expectations or requirements, we'll issue them a an adverse report and a warning letter. And we'll also carry out more checks on their facilities. And if turns out that their performance is substandard, then we could suspend their contract. Of course, if it involves major incidents, well, hopefully, luckily, we haven't seen them, uh whether they would be held liable in case of major accidents, I think that's not what we in our monitoring work uh would be expected to do. Miss Ken?
So maybe we just put this topic aside first. Because this has to do with our concern about industrial accidents lately. So this could be covered by the other ordinance on industrial accidents. But this topic on lifts and escalators maintenance, if there's no clear criminal responsibility for the contractors, I think we can put it aside and think about that later. My next question is on the lift modernization program. Paragraph one point eight, one point nine. In twenty two, twenty three, page five, in table two, the number of contracts approved, five, and involving the number of lifts which are less, that is sixty, sixty, um fewer than the years before. And there are also some enhancement works. So why is the number less in that particular year, twenty two, twenty three?
Thank you, Chairman. Our goal is that every year, we would issue eighty to ninety lifts plans. In that financial year, according to table two, when we issued a tender, on average, um it's about eight hundred eighty per year. So why it seem, why does it seem that in twenty nineteen to uh twenty two, twenty three, the number seemed to be less? And it's just because in that particular financial
And it's just because in that particular financial year, actually, if you look at the total number in a period of two years, we would on average issue about eighty programs. Okay, Ms. Ken? So I will follow up on the first tier, third, second tier, third tier of protection in part two. Next one, Lu Chong Hong.
Thank you, Chairman. Public lifts, on the surface, it seems they're working fine. The number of accidents are few. And the assumption, actually, um, about, about ninety-nine point nine percent of them actually managed to be um working again. But we need to look at the issue of value for money. Two questions, in one point seven, where it says that um there are eleven and nine maintenance of lifts and escalators. And um, in twenty-two, twenty-three, the expenditure was seven-hundred-sixty-three point two million dollars. On average, hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars for each escalator. I don't know whether it's expensive or not, so I'd like to ask Director of Audit. Have you compared the cost with the private market? Is it appropriate or expensive or cheap? And secondly, what about our criteria for maintenance? It should be higher than what the law requires and that will of course incur additional costs. Does the Director of Audit has any, done any study on that? Director of Audit?
Thank you, Member and Chairman. Well, we're not looking at that in particular this time. And secondly, the government procedures, as members know, we have to issue tenders, right, first? So it should be, our offer should be very competitive compared with the private sector. Director of Housing could answer further. Do you want to, Mr. Look? Okay, Ms. Um, Ms. Ho, Secretary. All along, we've been uh, been monitoring the data of private markets submitted by E M S D. And comparing with the private market, we think that our offers are similar. But as Mr. Look said, we have higher expectations in terms of a number of checks, actually is higher than what is required by law. Because we know that there are so many people, such a high number of people using the lifts and escalators. So safety must be our priority. If we can actually, of course, the private market has its own range. And comparatively speaking, we are within that range. I think our cost effectiveness is quite good. Maybe Ms. Law could supplement? Thank you, Ms. Law. Hundred-and-twenty-thousand is the annual figure, each month, each lift costs about eight, ten thousand eight hundred dollars a month. Yes. Sorry, uh, ten thousand three hundred dollars. In the market, my understanding i- is about uh ten thousand eight hundred. So it's very similar, but we are a bit cheaper. And as my colleague said, indeed, every week we had to carry out the checks and the law only requires us to carry out a check monthly. In the private market, the better performing ones will have a check bi-weekly. But there won't be that many operators will have a month, weekly check. And also, uh, every three months, we also carry out another check. In the private market, there's no such requirement by law. So how can we ensure good value for money and we can offer a lower price? Because of the large number of housing estates involved under Housing Authority. And also in our contracts from installation, on the first day, we have set the price and we've also made a reference to our existing property management contracts. Every year, we'll adjust our tender prices um or our quotations for material staffing on an annual basis. And we also were trying to ensure good value for money. And that's why we can offer a lower price than the, the private market and also expect more than what is required by law. And it's also doable financially. Mr. Look?
Well, uh, I've heard that uh quotations are a bit less than the private market. I think the public would have confidence in that. My question is, as you stressed just now, the secretary said that we have maintenance by the original manufacturers. That is, say, a certain brand will be providing the maintenance work for the lifts. So does it mean that, does it mean that we cannot change the, the person doing the maintenance at all? Like sometimes, uh, we heard the particular contractor always got a low score. So it said that we cannot change them, replace them, because you want to have the original manufacturer doing the maintenance. But what if it's underperforming? You said that the tender price is not expensive and yet, but if you tie all the services with the original manufacturers, they of course are supposed to be reliable, but in terms of competition, that may be a drawback?
Thank you, Chairman and Mr. Look. In our entire mechanism, we are effectively monitoring each contractor. Of all the contractors, of course, some will have a higher score and some have a less score, but all are uh qualified. Of course, their scores will affect their future chances of winning a tender. Now we have so many, in the coming decades, so many public housing units to be built. Everything go contractor is trying to perform well so as to continue their services for us. So I think that's the big incentive for us to make constant improvement. Mr. Look? As for original manufacturers, has it ever happened that a particular agent has moved out of the Hong Kong market and then they have to get a third party to carry out the maintenance work? Has it happened? Ms. Law? Of the eleven contractors right now, carry out work on the public works. Over the years, there may be a few companies which have merged. But for those of totally withdrawn from Hong Kong market, that hasn't happened yet. Mr. Look, you said there are eleven recognized contractors. But in terms of lift modernization program, there are only six contractors involved. What about the five others? Do you have to use the same contractors to do the L M program? Assistant Director, Mr. Hong?
Thank you. I think there should be nine. For escalators, there are nine. The main reason is that when we have a new building, there will be a new contractor. Simply put, there are nine contractors who have worked on our projects. Therefore, we have nine contractors now continuing with the maintenance work.
Mr. Look? Thank you. So for this part, any other members with questions? Mr. Long Hong Bill?
Chairman, I'd like to ask about the contractors to know more about them. One point seven, paragraph one point seven, and mentions about the eleven contracts for lift regular maintenance. And one point nine of the report, and appendix ten, shows that the Housing Authority for the contractors, those on the register, when they invite tenders from them to, that they are covered by the lift modernization program. And on the list of lift contractors, there are six, eleven companies there. Are we talking about the same eleven contractors here?
Mr. Hong?
Yes, correct.
Mr. Long? So Chairman, paragraph one point nine says that in twenty-eighteen, nineteen and twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, Housing Authority issue twenty-seven lift modernization contracts to six contractors involving three-hundred-and-twenty-two lifts at a volume of, at a cost of six-hundred-fifty-two point two million dollars. You just heard that in the maintenance contracts, you would go for the original manufacturers. So I'd like to know for this uh contracts for lift modernization, how many contracts would be given to the original manufacturers?
Assistant Director, Mr. Hong? Thank you. For regular maintenance, the original manufacturer will be responsible for that. As for this, we invite open tenders from the eleven contractors. So maintenance would be taken up by the winning bidder. Because it is like a new lift and the eleven contractors will be invited to take part in the tender again. Assistant Director, Mr. Hong already explained, in the lift modernization program, we want to overhaul all the parts, the lift machine room, et cetera. That is why we start an open tender afresh. Mr. Long? I get that, but when you issue tender afresh, how many contracts were ultimately awarded to the original contractors? That means how many of them were able to get the original contracts? What was the success rate? Uh, we have information at hand, we will be able to answer Mr. Long's question. Let me just check the information first. That's all from me, Chairman. Any other questions from members? If not, Ms. Young can start the next part.
Thank you, Chairman. Second part, maintenance of lifts and escalators, including four major points. Service performance of lifts and escalators, monitoring of contractors' performance, checking of contractor submission and logbooks for lifts and escalators. Two point two, according to term maintenance contract, in case of any breakdown of a lift or escalator, the contractor is required to attend to, check the courses off and record them in the logbooks. The logbooks are placed at the Housing Department's estate or building management offices. As for the next step, the DMO or PSA staff will input the breakdown details into the Housing Department's Enterprise Resources Planning System and then note fourteen. For the, the system is put in place for the administration of finance, procurement and estate maintenance. My question is, is it possible to streamline this procedure? That is, can there be a direct input of details by the H D staff to the Enterprise Resources Planning System instead of going through the DMO or PSA staff? Assistant Director, Hong?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, as explained in the previous part, for the first step, the technicians responsible for the check will, will record the breakdowns in the logbook. As for the second step, because of security reasons, we do not allow direct access but um into the, of the system by the staff, because it's after all a system maintained by the department. My question is not about direct input. My question is whether it's possible to include a link that is so that for contractors, they can go digital as well for the, so that the H D staff can also just rely on the digital input from the contractors. As explained, we are going to roll out a digital logbook system very soon. So I think it's a matter of interfacing the data in the digital logbook into our system. And this is something we are looking into. Ms. Young, in two point two and two point three, from the first of January twenty-twenty to thirtieth of April twenty-twenty-three, there were thirty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-four of um lift breakdowns and one thousand five hundred and thirty-nine escalator breakdowns. And among them, zero point seven percent and one point six percent of lift and escalator breakdowns respectively lasted for more than two days and in fact, three lifts had service suspended for over sixty days. We asked the administration before and according to them, it's O Chuk House, O Ping House, two lifts in O Ping House. In fact, the two lifts were suspended for eighty-one, eighty, seventy-two, eighty-one and eighty-nine days respectively. According to the administration, the original manufacturer did not have the um proprietary motor set. There was no stock in the inventory for replacement of the parts. So my question is, is it possible to improve the procurement and storage of parts to prevent a repeat of such incidents? Secretary?
Let me just answer um the general principles and then my colleagues can supplement. When it comes to lift modernization, we replace the lift and the parts. In the process, if we find the parts still intact and serviceable, we will not let them go to waste. We will keep a record and we will store the parts properly. So that when a replacement of parts is required for the lift of the same model, we will have spare to provide. Now, Ms. Young, you mentioned this incident. It so happened that two years ago, it was the COVID pandemic and there was a problem with transportation and logistics. Uh, hence a longer suspension period due to service disruption. I'll see if my colleagues would like to supplement as well, Mr. Hong, Assistant Director? Uh, not from me, except that usually this wouldn't happen. It was due to COVID that the parts were not easily available. Otherwise, it would be easy to find spare parts for replacement. Next, two point four, about lift and escalators. And the frequent prolonged suspension may cause inconvenience to residents. According to E M S D, malfunctioning of lifts is often signs of lift failures or incidents. So this is predictable. According to the secretary in her opening remarks, technology can be deployed. A scientific method can be adopted to predict lift failures. I don't know if this applies to older lifts, but does the administration have a timetable on when sensors can be installed for the purpose of investigating the condition of lifts? Can you include such sensors um as part of your lift installation for comprehensive management? Secretary? When we considered this issue with Hong Kong A S T R, we also considered the point made by the member. Um, there are parts relating to the lift cars and parts relating to the lift machine room. Now, if we're able to install devices for data collection at different locations, we can send data to the machine room for analysis. There may be irregularities. An image can be captured so that our maintenance team can be alerted in advance for early repair. Now, we just started this research with A S T R. We are going to select a number of lifts to be included in the pilot. Our target is to gradually extend this um scheme to cover other lifts. A S T R is trying to explore ways so that the technology can be applied to lifts of different makes and models. Ms. Young?
Well, I've, I am happy to hear that the administration is forward-looking in considering this uh method. Well, there are different systems, such as one managed by the Housing Department's Resource Planning System, uh, as well as other assessment systems. So you need to have better interfacing so that these systems can stay connected. Ms. Carmen can ask about
Miss Carmen can ask about the different tiers of responsibility. Because ultimately, we want somebody to be accountable in case something goes wrong. For example, if a spare part is needed, should we inform the State Management Division or. Or other units? So you need to take a broader perspective and tell us which uh unit should be accountable. Not just to um remind each other about that, but to clearly delineate responsibilities. So that we can save time and speed things up. I don't need a response for that. Next. Seven lifts. Had suspension of service for over two days. And for two lifts, they were suspended uh from two to nine days. According to the administration's response. For the. Lifts. Which had their suspension, um services suspension, they, there was malfunctioning of different parts. Such as the electronic um or the circuit board. We understand that it's not about um the same device going wrong within a short period of time. Still, it's a nuisance. To the public. Now, take these seven lifts malfunctioning twice in six months, that's quite frequent. Um under which program should they be put so that they could be maintained? More quickly, um I think Miss Yong was referring to uh R eighty one slash three slash Gen one, page two. Secretary.
Uh thank you, Chairman, thank you, Miss Yong. This is exactly what we are trying to work out with the A S T R as um next step. Uh at the moment, when there is um lift incident, our staff would attend to that as quickly as possible and fix the problem. Now, if we're able to retrieve images early on. Then our colleagues can check the data. And in a predictive manner, see whether other uh failures could be detected. And that's, this uh predictive approach can be achieved through data analysis. I thank the member for her reminder. We strive to improve uh as well. Two point six three, that's my next question. About twenty percent of lifted breakdowns and forty percent of escalated breakdowns were due to vandalism. Secretary just now mentioned a demerit point system to um which seek to punish the tenants by uh asking them to move out. Now, how many cases involve the uh points being deducted as a result of vandalizing lifts? And uh how many are leading to the tenant being evicted? According to the information I have, this year, we uh registered a case with points being deducted. In fact. As per the new policy, uh after accumulating sixteen points, the tenant will be evicted. So we will definitely take follow-up action in the event of vandalism. Um about bumping uh into the car doors. This may be an inadvertent mistake. Uh but let me remind everybody not to vandalize. Uh lifts. Two point one two, that's my next question, table six. Contractors with monthly M S B A S S scores below the passing score fifty marks, there were three, Contractor C. The Housing Department did not suspend um the. Eligibility of Contractor C in future uh tender bids, but the, because there was no. Um not an incident of not getting a fifty mark uh threshold in three consecutive months. Director, in three, two point one three A. Within twelve months. The contractor uh had less than passing go- score of uh fifty marks twice. That's from thirty two point four eight to forty eight point two five. We had interviews with the contractor, we also issued a warning letter, but we did not issue a, an adverse report. I asked my colleagues, before twenty nineteen, this contractor. Had never. Had something like this, so we believed that it might be more uh appropriate. To just interview them and remind them to do better. Because according to two point one one, uh. If the contractor's score is lower than the passing score twice in a rolling period. We will interview the contractor and consider whether to give an adverse report. If um we considered that there was room for improvement of the contractor, we would give them a chance. Unfortunately, for this contractor, in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, they, it continued to. Score a mark lower than the passing score. So apart from interviewing the contractor again, uh re- and issued a reminder, we had to issue. An adverse report, but that's not the end of the story. After a, an adverse report is issued, instead of um an assessment once every six months. It would be done once in three months, and our chief manager would conduct more surprise checks. To see if Contractor C had improved. In October twenty twenty one, according to what stated here. The score was still below the passing score, and another adverse report had to be issued. But since this didn't happen twice in a row. The con- contractor received two independent or separate adverse reports. And then um in two point one three B, Roman two. The monthly scores of Contractor C were below average in fourteen months. That means the average of all the scores of all the contractors in all these months. Now, it didn't mean that Contractor C um failed, only that it, its performance was not satisfactory. We provided further figures for your reference. In September twenty twenty to September twenty twenty three. Within the four-year period, the average score of the contractor was sixty three, as the passing score was fifty marks. It was not a bare pass, albeit a rather low score. In twenty twenty two, twenty three, after issuing adverse reports and after um a number of interviews. With the contractor to look for improve, um to put in place improvement measures, this goal actually increased. In twenty twenty two, it rose to sixty seven point five, in twenty twenty three, sixty seven. And in fact, the average in twenty twenty three of, for other contractors. Uh were lower, but for Contractor C, the score in twenty twenty three on average remained stable. We've urged Contractor C to con- improve its performance, now we are seeing the results. We will continue to monitor Contractor C to make sure that uh it will continue to improve. Miss Yong.
That means uh the administration has been actively liaising with Contractor C by issuing letters and issuing adverse reports, et cetera. I'd like to know uh why. Contractor C performed poorly, and in what areas and what remedial action was taken? Were exactly what difficulties were Contractor C experiencing? Did other contractors experience the same difficulties? Now, I sought to understand why Contractor C performed poorly. It's not, there's nothing serious in nature, but for example, in twenty uh nineteen, twenty twenty one. When the performance was poor. The um malfunctioning rate of the lifts um were higher than that of other contractors. And that accounts for the lower scores, especially under that category, and that also affected the overall scoring.
The second problem was. For example, if um a lift has to be suspended at the time that it took for them to arrive at the scene. What, within forty five minutes, if there's no passenger trapped? But then uh they would also have to arrive within twenty five minutes if there are passengers trapped. And then uh that happened in twenty twenty one during the peak of the pandemic. And in terms of manpower and also operation of the um. Company, the time of arrival at site um was um unsatisfactory. In fact, the situation has already improved since then, and we also require them to increase manpower. And they would also have to deploy additional manpower in dealing with such incidents, and there have been improvements. Thank you.
Yes, I, I for the, further follow-up. Because the situation is about um the relationship between the H A and um the um contractor, and that's under the contractor. And you have also got the assessment uh scoring system. And if um the contract, well, for this particular contractor, it's not the first time or the only occasion when he's not doing well. So uh have there been any follow-up action to sanction this particular contractor, director? Well, in terms of a scoring or assessment, instead of doing this uh once every six months, it's been done on a three-month basis. So that's the stepped-up surveillance. And also, uh according to our system, uh if they receive adverse reports for two consecutive um uh period. That is uh for the six monthly report, they would also have to be suspended from bidding for uh. Three quarters, but then, since that's not the case, that was not imposed on them. But then we have also um seriously looked at uh their performance, whether or not their performance would continue to decline. But then, for the time being. As um their performance has stabilized, and they are actually picking up again, and therefore. There is no specific sanction being imposed on them. But then, uh looking at the uh audit report, and given the figures um as shown in the report. Well, we would be considering whether or not there should be further penalties, or whether or not there should also be um. A reward system or incentive to encourage them to do a better job. Thank you. Um Chairman, it's also a follow-up, because using the existing um threshold is too relaxed. Because uh it's done on a six monthly basis, and only when they um their score is lower than fifty. Would there be any sanction at all? So it's a bit too relaxed, um so if they can be deleted from the list, then that would. Um if, or achieve a more, a higher deterrent effect, you would also have to uh increase the threshold. Because you're talking about uh the six monthly report, and it, it requires two consecutive uh adverse reports. Then it takes a, an entire year before they would be deleted from the list. And that would provide an encouragement or incentive for them to do uh poorly. And therefore, you will have to tighten up the um monitoring system. You would also have to review the assessment scoring system, whether or not there are any inadequacies uh that has to be improved. So that's my suggestion, and I've already overrun on my time, so I'll give the floor to other members first, Miss Khan.
Chairman, in para two point nine. Well, according to the Housing Department, for the maintenance works. So it's about the means of an assessment uh mechanism to maintain the standard of maintenance. So the first line of the, that's the first line of defense uh for the performance of the contractors, so I'd like to follow that, that up. I agree with what Mister Yunus Yong just said, that is for the assessment scoring mechanism or system. Uh it leaves something to be desired. Well, if you look at para two point ten and two point eleven. Well, two point ten says that uh the system was launched in nineteen ninety one, that's the B M, B S M A S S. I'd like to know whether or not it has been um improved um in line with time. And in particular, in light of the um Fuxin Estate um incident, well, what cap one, six one eight was amended. And there were also some additional provisions, for example, if there is any criminal element. And also, they would be um uh given a level three fine. So uh. Well, in two point eleven. So apparently, um a warning letter and also an interview will be um conducted. And they would also be suspended for tendering for at least three months, and yet it's still for, it's still fall short of um criminal liability. So what about the powers uh given to you under cap um um, well, under the law? Well, it, when it comes to criminal liability, well, under the E M S D, there are certain liabilities um imposed on the contractors. And if they breach that, then um the criminal liability applicable under the law would also apply to these contractors. Whether or not there would be occupational safety, that's something that we are also very concerned about, and that would also be um. Um provided under the um Labor Department legislation, and that would also entail criminal liability. But then, when it comes to maintenance works, we are talking about the assessment scoring system, and that was introduced in nineteen ninety one. Meaning that since that year, we have already got a system in place to assess the performance of the individual contractors. It doesn't mean that uh the system. Which was introduced uh in nineteen ninety one was never modified since then, as we have set out in part one. Well, the E M S D. Back in, well, after twenty ten, after the major incident, um the law was changed. And of course, we made reference uh to the legislation in order to uh move with time. And as a result, more uh regular inspections are carried out. And, and we have also adopted a more stringent standard than what is required under the law. Because we understand, we understand that the utilization rate of our lifts and escalators would be higher. And um we would also have to minimize the downtime, and also the uh uh re- the time required for repair and maintenance. Miss Khan, I'm referring to cap six one eight A. So it's directly about uh lifts and escalators are general regulations. So it's about uh the lifts and escalators. For example, there is a need for them to provide the logbook, and also the uh requirement to keep records and so on. So if this happens without reasonable uh explanation, then a fine can be imposed on the contractor concerned. So I'm concerned that we have the legislation in place, and therefore, we hope that uh the um authorities would um. Invoke the law when necessary, because um, well, I understand that both the director and her team are new. Uh to the office. And this is also a very major responsibility, because for lifts and escalators, the safety of them is very important. And therefore, this assessment mechanism has not been able to uh move with time. For example, two point eleven A B C. Would be something that um the contractor can get around very easily. And you've also mentioned that uh you would require them to get a score lower than the um passing score. On a monthly basis before they would be sanctioned, and also. And also, you would also require two consecutive adverse reports um um in a matter of six months. And then, for two months, they might be doing okay, and then for the third month, they might be doing very poorly, and that's why. And then, um, well, because our contractor sees performance, and also the score on a monthly basis has not been satisfactory. For a consecutive three months, because if they did not fail for three consecutive months, then they would not be suspended from tendering. So you would really need to review this, because they would have to perform poorly for three consecutive months. Uh before they would be suspended from tendering. I think the um, the deterrent effect is not strong enough. And therefore, this is my advice to the administration, given this very rare opportunity of the audit report. I think it's time for you to review this, and also for two point nine. Let's take a look at B C D under para two point nine, Miss Yong already brought that up. It's about the uh monitoring of um. A repair and maintenance, is it time for you to review it and update it? Or you think it's already okay, because the first line of defense is for the contractor to do their jobs. And then B is about the D M Os, which is responsible for monitoring the performance of the contractors. And then, in doing so, the audit re- the audit report has also identified some problem, that's set out in para two point one five. Because uh for some parts, there were three. Because for some parts, there were three lifts within a two year period. Well, nothing was done in terms of assessment of those three lifts. And that also has to do with two point nine B, that is the monitoring of contractors by D M Os, and that leaves something to be desired. And also the inspections conducted by D H D headquarters staff for surprise checks and additional checks. And then inspections done by the lift inspection focus team. And according to the report, well, for note twenty two, it says, it says out the reason why we had this. That's, well, that was set up in year two thousand, and it's under the Permanent Secretary's office. It's an independent checking unit. And that's because the director authorized the head of the I C U. To take care of the. Premises that has, that have been sold under different schemes. And as a result, we had the third tier of monitoring. So in terms of monitoring, we already had have this three tier system in place. And yet, apparently, there are problems in relation of, in relation to all these three tiers. So can the administration respond to the question about whether or not there would be savings? And also efficiency and serviceability of lifts and so on? So is there any room for improvement? Well, Bureau Director, I'll answer points in relation to matters of principle, and then I'll leave the details to my colleagues. With regard to the assessment scoring system, yes, the system was introduced in nineteen ninety one. Yet, because of some statutory requirements and also because of some latest practice, the system has been updated. And Miss Khan was asking. Well, our approach is that it would take three consecutive adverse reports before any follow up action would be taken. But then after, when there are two adverse reports already, well, even if there's only one adverse reporter. Our colleagues would pay special attention to the performance of this particular contractor. And of course, the purpose is to ensure that they would make improvements before the next adverse report would come up. So we would alert the contractor and we would also step up monitoring. As to the independent checking unit, indeed, it's the same as the Buildings Department. Well, the independent checking unit would act in accordance with the Buildings Department's legislation. So that would apply to the H A projects and also buildings. So that unit will report directly to the Permanent Secretary of Housing. So that's very important for the three tier system. Well, they would have their own division of labor. The first tier would be at the frontline, so that's under the D M O's manager. So the D M O's manager would do the day to day monitoring. And he would monitor the performance of individual contractors. And there would also be the focus teams that would conduct surprise checks. So it's to ensure that the contractor would be doing what he is required to do. And there is also this I C U, the independent checking unit, which is directly under the supervision of the Permanent Secretary. So it's a high level monitoring unit. For the specific details, I'll leave it to the director. Yes, Miss Law?
Thank you, Chairman. The first thing is under para two point eleven, we will have to be very careful in explaining that to members. There might have been some misunderstanding. Well, two point one one A, B and C refers to the monthly score. In fact, the monthly score is about the performance of the contractor within that month. But that, that doesn't mean that, well, within a twelve month period. If, well, the contractor's performance is below. Or has failed for twelve consecutive months, because that's an average month, for example, under B. Well, if they fail on two occasions, that is within a twelve month period, if they fail. In any two months, then action will be taken against them, including an adverse report being issued. Or if their past performance has been satisfactory, then we would issue a warning letter. And then we would invite them to, for an interview immediately to identify ways of improvement. And then under A, for the first time that they get a score below the passing score, they would be invited for an interview. Instead of waiting until they pass every single month before some action would be taken against them. So there might be some misunderstanding about whether or not we might be too relaxed in dealing with such contractors. But then, as the two members have mentioned, we have different tiers of monitoring. And within our department, there are also different tiers of monitoring. In fact, over the years, we have been increasing the levels of monitoring, and that has achieved some effect. And as the audit report has admitted, the overall performance is not really that bad. In fact, we have been doing quite a good job, but of course, there is always room for improvement. And indeed, at every juncture for the contractors' logbooks. And also on our part, for the coordinating. Team or the C T S, they might not have followed up on each and every documentation. And also for the I C U that is under the Permanent Secretary, whether or not they have done things properly. And who is to monitor their work? Well, definitely, we will have to rely on technology in the future so that all the information will be collated and entered. And then we have the beam system. So that for newly completed buildings, for the. Under the beam system, we'd be able to use the data in our property management. And even for old buildings, we hope to apply new technology to them as well. But then that might take some time. But then, once everything is in place for each and every housing estate, if we have this system in place. Then we'll be able to make sure that at different levels, we'll be able to review the situation. So that the information would be fed to the relevant level of officials who would be responsible for monitoring their performance. And then proper follow up action can also be taken. With the advancement in technology, we may not need an actual person to do the monitoring. The system itself would be able to identify any problems or any omissions to make sure that these loopholes would be plugged. So that's the direction to take, thank you.
Next, Miss Khan. Thank you, Chairman. I'm grateful to the department and also the director for the explanation on para two point eleven as to how we should read it. And also for the assessment system, she also agreed that it has to be updated with time. Because for cap six one eight A, well, there are special characteristics. And with the law in place, we have to abide by it. And also, if you look at Gen one, this is our eight eight one three. Well, for the issues identified by the audit department, the response has to do with the spare parts. Well, you call it the motor, motor, because it's not available. And that's the reason why there have been such delays in the suspension. And also in page, on page two, the contractor has been asked to increase the inventory for such spare parts. In order to reduce or avoid such suspension. Because we have also got this report from the H K U S T, which says that for the repair and maintenance time. And also the strategy adopted, that may not have to do with the serviceable life of the machine at all. It may have to do with the spare parts availability. And therefore, we will have to step up our efforts in stocking up enough spare parts for repair and maintenance. Well, you've only asked the contractor to increase the inventory as soon as possible. I hope that in light of this report, you would have to step up your monitoring of the contractors. In order to ensure that the public can use these lifts and escalators with confidence. In two point two two, the audit departments, well, thanks to the audit department, they have also done fifteen inspections. Checking some twenty nine lifts, independent inspection reports. And they've also identified that, well, when it comes to the independent checking report, that has, well, the I C U has to be, has to report to the Permanent Secretary. You said that it's a well established and time honored system, and that will continue. I hope that, well, in two point two four E, you promised to do certain things. So is that, well, can you respond to the point about the menu? Has that been updated at all? Okay, who is to answer this question?
Mr. Hong? Yes, it's being updated. Miss Ken? Thank you, Chairman. What direction would it go into in terms of the updating? Assistant Director, Mr. Hong? It will actually specify the time. And remind staff when the work should be carried out. In other words, it will be carried out on a monthly basis, Miss Ken? Well, specific time, it's always there. I think there's the requirement for thirty day period. That is, if I C U told the official about the case, then the Housing Authority, Housing Department themselves should remind the district officers. And P A S to do the work. Is it because of underperformance by P S As or district offices? If time allows, Chairman, two point nine B. It is about the district maintenance officers which do the monitoring. And P S As refers to the outsourced work of the housing department, which involves also monitoring. And now, once, what, what, the problem identified by the Audit Commission, is it the forty percent of the work carried out by the. The O M's, D M Os or the outsourced work? Because the lack of response within the thirty period, thirty day period, what's the reason behind that? I think for the district office, it includes the D M Os and the district P S As. As I said earlier, forty percent of the housing estates are directly monitored, that is managed by the housing department. The remaining sixty percent are outsourced to P S As. We must acknowledge that in our own maintenance, maintenance offices. Or those monitored by P S As, there would be some sort of negligence. And we agree with the audit report that we need to have better procedures. And also adherence to timeframe in doing the monitoring. Miss Ken, yes? That's the, what's the director need to respond? You need to provide the right solution. Okay, are you going to improve the monitoring by D M Os or you should monitor P S As better? I think you need to think about that. No more questions from me on that part, Miss Ken. Next is Wong Chun Shaak.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about two point one five. That is twenty twenty one and twenty two, there are twenty one and twenty six lifts respectively not assessed. Why were they not assessed?
Assistant Director, Mr. Hong? Two point one five? Thank you, Chairman. We discussed this paragraph before, that is when our staff made the inputting. Well, we found that actually our staff omitted the omission of the relevant information. So we have done a review and we have actually updated the information on this. So it's an omission, omission is a fact. Why would the omission occur? Because we're talking about something systematic. Under your monitoring, there shouldn't be any omission. You should have a register for you to rely on. So there must be reasons behind, is it manual error or there is no such system in place, Mr. Hong? The twenty one and twenty six lifts, they were lifts. That were just assessed. And three of them had omissions. So that's what we found after we reviewed the record, so there are omissions for three lifts. Is it a systematic error? You said that, well, you've inputted the data after your review. And you found the omission occurred? So. How are you going to improve on your relevant procedures? I'm just worried that it's only identified after the directive audit report. But if it's extended to all samples across Hong Kong, then the number of omissions could be higher. Thank you. As I said, I'd like to thank the Audit Commission for identifying the problem. In the past, generally speaking, after the work was done, we will ask the staff to input the data. So it's a very simple procedure, but with this discovery, we will. Take actions to make sure that the data will be inputted, that is to have one person doing the inputting and the other doing the cross checking. Mr. Wong? So you've updated your procedure, right? Yes. As for two point one eight, why is it that? Thirty days were needed for you to issue the notification of completion for the relevant C S Ts? Mr. Hong? Our C S Ts identified the problems, and after that, during the checks, they will carry out a report. And the report will be given to the relevant districts, and the staff in the relevant districts would. Carry out follow up work. Some issues found were relatively simple, others would take more time to resolve. Or even they would be put off till the lift organization program is carried out. So different timeframes were needed. On the whole, every time after check was finished, there will be replied to the C S T. Based on the report. Miss Law, supplement? Chairman, two point one eight eight two, the twenty six cases. In point B, there were elaborations on the twenty six cases in point two. In two point one eight A one, it says that the, in one case, the defects were verified and D M O issue the notification of completion to C S T. For the remaining twenty six, twenty six cases, so various time lengths or timeframes were needed. And but by the September twenty twenty three, upon the request of the directive audit, we answered that we proved to the Audit Commission. That of the thirteen defects discovered. Found as a result of surprise checks, eleven had been verified, while two involving improvement works would be followed up during L M works. So we carry out a search, look at our information, and we did find that work was done. But it's just that what's lacking was we didn't have the paper records to show that follow up action was taken by C S Ts. For C S Ts, they were staff based in our headquarters. After they were carried out the verification, the follow up would not be done by it. Because it only had one chief technical officer assisted by support staff. So he couldn't possibly carry out all the follow up work, which has to be carried out by the maintenance staff, repair staff at the housing estates. In various districts. So as mentioned in two point one eight A one, notification of completion would be issued upon the completion of work. And we need to strengthen that aspect of procedure, and we found our inadequacy. But that doesn't mean that the C S Ts reports based on surprise checks. And was not followed by the required follow up works. So, Mr. Wong? So in the future, we'll choose a timeframe for, a deadline for reply. So that we can give a relevant performance pledge to the public. Miss Law? It would depend on the nature of the works and the time needed for follow up work. But if it's a project that requires a long timeframe, for example, for two cases that involve improvement works. Which cannot be possibly be dealt with in a short period of time. And those cases need to be put on record to indicate how and when the work will be completed. As for paragraph two point two two, about delay in issuing reminders, are you going to set up a mechanism to avoid further delays? Mr. Hong? Two point two two. Uh, Miss Law? Uh, Ms. Law?
This is about the independent checking units, which is under me. Of course, we need to look at the issue of delays. But whereas someone new to my position, I've noticed one point, which is that the delays in issuing reminders, particularly that is from January twenty twenty-two to April this year. Of all the cases noted, we appreciate their discovery about those new findings. But, but I remember they happened during the fifth wave of the pandemic, which began in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, which lasted till the second season, a quarter. So in the housing estates, there were all kinds of situations that we need to deal with. And also at the, during the fifth wave of the pandemic, there was a lot of manpower constraint. So delays in that period, my, I personally would be inclined towards being more lenient with what happened. But that doesn't mean that we will tolerate such issue. We will deal with it. Mr. Wong? Are you going to set up any mechanism in the future? Can you tell the public what you think? Of course, under the pandemic, well, there are also some reports that had to be made during the pandemic, not just yours. Do we need to set up a mechanism so the public knows that we are making improvement? Like Ms. Young said in the beginning, we need to find out the source of the problem to make improvement rather than just making excuses or just accepting what happened. We need to identify the root cause so as to help us make improvements. I believe that the secretary will not deny that what happened has happened and that what we'll have to do is to find out any performance pledge, possible performance pledge. Director?
When the auditing began, secretary and I myself promised that we would review our entire maintenance system, including the various layers under it and whether that's an ideal arrangement. And also, should there be delays or inadequacies? Or, for example, inadequacies in reporting? We have promised to make improvements. And we may resort to technology to help us to the work. That's our pledge. And, Mr. Wong? I should know that we will, we will be very serious with it. Mr. Wong? Chairman? Since the administration says they were looking to the issue, they will, will not ask further. But last point is that two point twenty-seven, paragraph B, um, uh, so there are actually seven hundred and ninety accounts have been activated so far. How many more accounts have not been activated? Mr. Hong?
Well, I think seventy percent have been activated. So the remaining thirty percent will be activated in the first quarter. So you are using the paper log book now. You have to manually input a data. How many people were needed? How many people in your team doing the manual inputting? Mr. Hong?
Thank you. Well, this is part of our routine daily work. So we don't have any um, a particular calculation for a number of staff doing that. In other words, we wouldn't have a designated team doing the inputting work. But in implementing the system, you must have data supporting, uh, you know, whether the, the workflow has been improved because of the arrangement, right? For budgeting purpose, right? In the, in the past, where we could have a hundred and ninety thousand civil servants um, doing the same work, but with the new system, thirty percent of the staff could be safe. And then the total enrollment of civil service could drop to like a hundred fifty thousand, right? So so each system would have its benefit and that can help save manpower or reduce working hours or manpower saved with the implementation of a new system, right? Ms. Law? In the housing estates, there are more than six thousand lifts every week. The contractors would carry out inspection and our staff would also, on an annual quarterly basis, monitor their work. And so it's not just monitoring the repair and maintenance of lifts alone. That's why, as why Mr. Hong could not say we don't have a designated team. Because I wish we had, but the fact is, in carrying out repair and maintenance, that's part of the regular management work of our housing estates. So if we resort to technology, then that can help us make improvements in various aspects. Doesn't mean that we will necessarily save three people or two people's work. Based on my past experience in, for example, handling E licenses, for example, in the early stage, you may not save manpower immediately, but it can lead to manpower saving in the long run. And we are developing a new system. And as I said, the lift and escalator maintenance, they involve small lifts and, and also contractors and also technicians and also supervisors, the housing departments. So they do these, all this stuff, new time to adjust to a new system. So to talk about manpower reduction, it's, it's too early to talk about that now at this stage. Mr. Wong? Okay, no more questions for me. Ms. Young? Mr. Long, Mr. Long first.
Back to two point two, paragraph two point two. The directive audit inspected from January twenty twenty-two to April twenty twenty-three. The, um, annual maintenance reports for lifts and escalators, it seems like, um, the monthly breakdown rates of lifts and escalators range from point oh, one oh to one point, point one seven and from one, point one one and two point two six respectively. And it's found that in the past three years, in the past three years, the breakdown information on lifts, for lifts, the average breakdown of lifts is point one three involving three point zero for older lifts. So I'd like to find out about, um, my understanding, whether my understanding is correct, the breakdown rate. Does it mean that the older lifts, say if there are ten of them, in a particular month, they broke up on five? Or they broke down five times at point five percent? Is my understanding correct? Let me brief you on the concept of breakdown of lifts. Uh, colleagues can supplement on further information or more in-depth information? Uh, Ms. Ho, yes, Secretary?
On Mr. Long's question, let me brief you on the breakdown rate. Like we, we got six thousand lifts. The, we would divide them by the average situation of a lift each month. If it's point one three, that means that each lift on a a monthly basis had a breakdown rate of point one three percent. That's less than one, less than, um, ten percent, of course. And just then you mentioned point five, point one three. So I asked Mr. Hong, could he elaborate? Mr. Hong, Assistant Director? I think Mr. Long's observation is correct. Generally speaking, looking at the fifty-six lifts aged thirty-five to forty years old, that is, they will have a breakdown every two months on average. So we've noticed that for those lifts, the breakdown rate is higher. And they have been covered by our lift modernization program. Of these fifty-six lifts, they are all covered by our lift modernization program.
Mr. Long?
For lifts included in the L M program, a total replacement could, of course, solve the problem. But whilst waiting for the lift to be modernized, are there ways you can use to lower the breakdown rate? This rate of zero point five doesn't sound staggering. But quoting the example I just gave, if you have ten aged lifts and then in a month, five of them would break down, then it's great, um, it's causing inconvenience to residents. Secretary?
Yes, I thank Mr. Long for the question. We manage over six thousand lifts. We need to set priority to, um, the modernization of lifts. And that is why we take a scientific approach in identifying lifts to be put under the L M program. It doesn't mean that we don't monitor other lifts. In the beginning of today's public hearing, we explained that we adopt a three-tier mechanism in monitoring contractors' performance. We also conduct surprise checks to help us identify irregularities. In the long run, we'll seek to apply technology more extensively, which can help us take preemptive and preventive measures in identifying more risk-prone lifts. Assistant Director, anything to add? No, Mr. Long?
Chairman? What I'm trying to say is, modernization is, of course, the outcome we all want, but it is a process. You can't replace the lift just by including it in the L M program overnight. So before the lift is totally modernized, are there ways to lower the breakdown rate? Let me give you an example. Once you identify these lifts as aged, not so much high-risk, but aged, will you conduct maintenance more frequently? So that before it breaks down, you can resolve the problem? Director?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Long? For this higher risks lifts, of course, we consider whether action can be taken. We already have a weekly inspection and maintenance program. We are collaborating with Astri in the future. They may develop a product that will allow a preventive maintenance approach to be taken so that they can predict lift breakdowns. But of course, I agree that in an aged housing estate, not only a single lift will be identified as aged, but other lifts as well. So for the older housing estates, it is true that we need to step up monitoring of the lifts. In fact, we have been reminded by this audit report that we need to address a problem. Before the lifts in older estates are modernized, it is true that they are not more prone to breakdowns than newer lifts. It's whether we can minimize service disruption as much as possible and complete the maintenance and repair. Uh, this is what we will strive to achieve. Yes, Mr. Long? Thank you, Chairman. Next, two point three. The audit analyzed two hundred and nineteen breakdowns of lifts with suspension periods lasting over two days. Three lifts had services suspended for over sixty days. As stipulated in the term maintenance contract, forty thousand dollars have been deducted from the monthly maintenance payment by the housing department. Seven lifts had services suspended for over two days, twice within six months. And according, I mean, the audit report did not provide, um, did not mention any penalty. So is that the threshold? If it goes beyond sixty days, then forty thousand dollars we deducted for the service suspended. If it's within sixty days, then, or within six months, no other penalty would be meted out. Uh, would there be a sliding scale device? As explained in the letter in Gen one. In respect of the two scenarios in two point three A and B, they are very different. For two and three A, uh, two point three A, the service was suspended for over sixty days. This is undesirable. We explained that this was due to the supply of raw materials. That means spare parts. We already explained that we would stock up spare parts in the future. Uh, this is agreed by the member. For two point three B, seven lifts had services suspended for over two days, twice within six months. In appendix, in the appendix of Gen one, page two, there is a table. As you can see, or rather, in the annex, the, the the reason of suspension is not due to poor manage, uh, poor maintenance. The number of suspension days lasted from three to six days only. So it's a huge difference from a suspension of sixty days. We don't have a sliding scale. But for cases involving a hu- huge, um, impact, financial penalty was meted out. Paragraph two point seven. In the case of trapping of passengers, the contractor should arrive on the scene within twenty-five minutes. And then within thirty minutes, the contractor should make his best effort to release the trapped passenger safely. So altogether, a passenger might be trapped in a lift for up to an hour, fifty-five minutes, in other words. So in reality, if a resident presses the alarm in the lift, indicating that he is trapped, are there guidelines to follow? Does the management office summons the lift contractor to come? Or will the office just ring the fire services department or what? Assistant Director? Now, in the event of a breakdown, there is a, um, caretaker at each block. The contractor will be called at the first instance. We need to guarantee, uh, we need to ensure that the passenger is safe inside. Some passengers may become quite anxious. We need to comfort them. And when some passengers become too anxious, we will call the fire services department as well. Now, the performance pledge is for the contractor to arrive within twenty-five minutes. And very often, they could arrive in just, uh, within twenty minutes. About comforting the passengers is really important, because I was trapped in the lift before. Two point eleven. For those with poor performance, those who have received a warning letter or even an adverse report, they can be suspended for tendering for at least three months. Priority main, uh, propriety maintenance is your policy, is that right? If the contractor is suspended for tendering for three months, then it doesn't affect the proprietary maintenance the contractor currently undertakes. Is a suspension for tendering for three months sufficient deterrents? Secretary? We briefly discussed the point raised by Mr. We briefly discussed the point raised by Mister Louis Long before. Suspending the contractor from tendering is a huge uh loss. Because, as you know, we have a stream of projects coming um in a pipeline. Involving a large number of lifts. So if the contractor is to win a bid from the Housing Department projects. The contractor should work harder, because otherwise, it will affect his chance of winning the bid. And the contractor will even incur a bigger loss if he's suspended for tendering. This is a major incentive for the contractor to keep up the performance. Right, two point two six. According to the audit. Fifty-three submissions were made by the eleven uh lift and escalator contractors. And of these quarterly inspection report submissions, there were delays in twenty-two. Involving eight lift and escalator contractors. So eight out of eleven contractors delayed in submitting quarterly inspection reports. This seems to be a uh quite uh prevalent problem. Have you found out why um they uh delayed in submitting quarterly inspection reports? So that you can put in place measures to prevent this from happening again? Secretary. I thank Mister Long for this question. We had a discussion before. Indeed. This leaves much more to be decided. Let me give the floor to Assistant Director Mister Hong to share his views with you. Yes, we reviewed the situation. This is a requirement on top of the statutory requirements. Uh which the contractors were required to follow. Now, um after all, that period was in midst of Covid. Still, we already urged them to improve the situation. Ultimately, they submitted all the inspection reports. In fact, recently, we urged the contractors to step up their performance again. Now, they are in full compliance with the schedule. They also signed all the reports. Now, in fact, uh whenever they make a submission, they may sign on a memo, but not on the subsequent. Pages of the report. In fact, it is our requirement for them to sign on each and every page. Uh in fact, they have followed this requirement. Now. Chairman. When it comes to documentation. I don't think the contractors are paying enough attention, because if you move go on to paragraph two point two seven. This paragraph refers to. The reports being certified or signed um. To the fact that the lift and escalators were in a safe, satisfactory, serviceable condition. Eight of these thirty-two reports were not duly signed by the engineer. I think that it is very important for professionals to sign his name in a report. If the report is not signed, can we tell whether or not it is safe? I am disappointed. Because after all. Professional engineers are involved. Apart from what the Assistant Director said, and that upon interviewing the contractors, they have made improvements. Have you found out why the reports were not signed? Um have you found out why uh they? Document- the documentation uh was not taken seriously enough? Assistant Director. Most practitioners of the sector. Would focus on ensuring safety of the um va- parts and devices. At the front line. And indeed, in terms of making reports. There is much more to be desired. That is why we will be rolling out the electronic logbooks. And after rolling out the digital logbooks, we will be able to get more useful data. Before a full rollout of the e-logbooks, we've talked to all the contractors. They all agreed that um improvements should be made. Uh I truly hope that the digital logbooks could help address the problem. Still, for they are professionals, they carry certain responsibilities. Signing reports form part of their duties. It's very important. Anything else, Mister Long? Director, Mister um Miss Ho. The digital logbook is an important measure. Once again, I have confirmed with my colleagues. That here, we're not talking about the engineers not doing their duty. And I agree with Mister Long that the sector. In general, doesn't attach a lot of importance in signing papers and reports. Now, on digital logbooks, since engineers are involved, we can talk to the Hong Kong Institute of Engineers. So that this institute can remind their members, apart from getting the job done. They should profe- protect their own profession by urging the members to duly sign these reports. Otherwise, um if the report is submitted without uh duly acknowledging the safety uh of. Lifts, then it will be problematic. Mister Paul Che, I want to follow up on two point two seven as well. Percentage-wise, we don't see a lot of non-compliant cases. In paragraph two point two seven. I learned that um the department monitors the the. Contractors' performance on a weekly, monthly, quarterly uh basis. There is a year um. An annual assessment, there is a checking of different safety devices, et cetera. There is already a lot of duplications here. Now, about the two point two seven, this is a contractual requirement, not a statutory requirement. Still, you should follow um the contracts requirements. Like Mister Lou said, it's especially problematic in paragraph two point two seven, percentage-wise. Seventy-three percent. And that means thirty-two of forty-four reports were not certified. And then eight of the thirty-two reports were not duly fined, that mean uh signed, that means now ninety percent of the reports were not certified or signed. Some forty reports. That means the reports will be rendered meaningless. We are all familiar with reports. The reports should represent a true and fair view. Without signing the reports, does it mean that the engineers are not responsible? Or the content are not confirmed? Uh you mentioned how the profession is to be uh protected, but I. Back to differ, I think that if something goes wrong by not signing the report. The engineers could go scot-free, and it's a matter of a possible legal dispute. I don't think Mister Lou's question has been answered. We don't just need to look forward, we need to look back as well. Why did the engineers not sign the reports? They knew how to get the job done. Um were there uh special reasons why they didn't sign the reports?
Bureau Director, well, as Mister Hong just explained, I think um it's just a matter of practice and there is room for improvement. Every time when they submit, uh when they submitted the report, the number might be very large. And therefore, the practice is that they just uh put their name on the first page. Um signifying that they've already read the reports. Uh we believe that that's not good enough. And they would have to sign each and every report to indicate that they've um uh gone through the report, instead of just putting one signature. On the cover of those reports. And as the director just said, um what would be um talking to the H K I E. And also, I'd also be talking to the um D M Os, uh and also the officers responsible. So that when they submit the report, they have to take care to ensure that this practice will be rectified. Yes, anything to add?
Yes, um well, comparatively speaking, well, um. For other reports, for example, for the regular or routine uh maintenance, uh those that are done once a year. Well, for those without any signature, and also those without any certification, so um they didn't have um such problems. Can you confirm that? Yes?
Um Director of Audit. Yes, if we haven't uh noted that in the report, that means we haven't identified any reports without signature. It doesn't mean that they have signed all the reports, because we have done the random checks. And then for the parts and the reports that we check, um there were signatures on that. So, um were there any circumstances or cases in which there was no signature? Uh giving rise to disputes? Or uh were there no such um incidents at all? Well, as far as I'm aware, there was none. Um there wasn't any such situation at all. But then, um on each and every report, when the contractor submitted the report. They would have to have the name and also the serial number of the engineer involved um uh on the cover of the report. But then the most desirable approach is that the um engineer would have to sign on each and every report. But then, uh did they ever said that, say that, well, because of the very cumbersome um. Um procedures involved, they might not have been able to sign on each and every report. Well, we haven't received any complaint from engineers saying that the system was too um complicated. But then, um as I said at the beginning, we were grateful to the audit department, and as Miss Young mentioned, because uh. Well, from our perspective, it's a multi-level monitoring system, and we ourselves felt that we had done a lot already. But then the problem with this is that we might have done a lot of things, and yet they are not clear enough. And also, the effectiveness uh might not be very prominent. It's not just confined to repair and maintenance. Well, for the persons involved, whether they are professionals or the contractors or our own colleagues. We are putting a lot of efforts in certain procedural things instead of the real matter. Um that is of concern, that is about repair and maintenance. And on this occasion, I'm really grateful to the audit department for raising this point. And members have also raised this point, because in the past, for government departments. Whenever there's any suggestion that the signature was missing and so on and so forth. We just try to add in one further procedure, and that would make things even more cumbersome. And more difficult to follow. And therefore, on this occasion, we will have to take a serious look on how things can be improved, including the use of technology. For example, in terms of inspection and um overhaul, and also the resources deployed for that, and also procedurally. If there is any room for improvement and streamlining, we we would spare no effort in doing so. In fact, the performance is not bad at all, because if you look at the default rate, but then um uh it's like um um. Something that can be further improved, and why not? Okay, Miss Young, well, two point one seven is about the surprise checks results. That would not be included in the um scoring system. Why? Because for the surprise checks, why is said that the result would not be included? In assessing the uh work performance every year, should that element be included as well? Who is to answer? Uh Assistant Director. As we explained earlier, for the surprise checks. So our chief technical officer will be deployed to uh look at that. And therefore, there is no standard checklist for this, and therefore, depending on the circumstances, the items um. That would be inspected would be somewhat different. And for the assessment scoring system, we have a standard mechanism. And well, each um um element on the list would be given a certain weighting. But then for the surprise checks, I would identify areas where there could be further improvement. That's the reason why it's not been included in the assessment mechanism. All right, how for the additional checks, would that also be included in the assessment uh system? Or is that is over and above the existing mechanism, and also for surprise checks and also additional checks? After they've been completed, what's the um effectiveness? Who is to answer?
Assistant Director. Thank you, Chairman. The reason why we conduct such a surprise checks and additional checks, because for each if each contractor. Well, the um chief um technical officer would take a look at the performance of the individual contractor's performance. And if there is any uh specific incident, or if we identify certain areas that would require. Further improvement by the contractor, then would conduct surprise checks and additional checks to find out ways to help the contractor. Make improvements. So would make suggestions and recommendations to the contractors for improvement. But then for the assessment um scoring system, it's a separate system. The reason why we are seeing that there might be duplication of efforts. All right, you say that you have the uh C S T, the. Central Services Team that would be doing this, and yet for the findings. They would not be included in the assessment scoring system for assessing the performance of the contractor. So apparently, the C S Ts would be doing things. That we have no way to find out if it's been effective. If it's part of the assessment scoring system, then you're conducting checks. It's not just a one single check. That would give the score to the contractor. So if everything is included. Then uh between um you and the contractor, the contract, and also how they submit the uh logbook, and also the timing of submission. And also uh on the quarterly inspection and so on. If everything is standardized, then um S D H A. You would find it easier to monitor the performance of the contractor, instead of asking the headquarters to. Uh ask the C S T to do the checks, and then there is no way that you can find out the results or the performance of the contractor. So would that be, uh would that make things um easier to control? Well, thank you for your suggestion, Miss Young. What has Miss Young said at the beginning? You reminded us. That for this inspection and repair and maintenance system. Would be done by different departments or units, and there are different elements in the course of assessments. And that, what you said was something that has been in place for years. And we have also updated the legislation, and we try to do what is over and above the statutory requirements. And under that kind of assessment scoring system, the uh demand on the contractor would be a lot more stringent than what the law. Would require. But then, given with um uh where resources permit, for example, for the chief um. Technical officer, and also for the um independent checking unit. Whatever manpower and resources that they can deploy, uh they would be deployed in the areas where we would think. Uh necessary, in the areas uh requiring improvement in order to. Uh increase the vigilance of the contractor, so that they know that on top of the regular inspections. There would also be surprise checks. And also, as I said. If the performance has been um unsatisf- unsatisfactory, then um. We would use the C S T and also the I C Us. To conduct more surprise checks. In order to ensure that whatever we have taken up with them in terms of improvements would be implemented seriously. And if they fail to do that, then that would also be reflected in the assessment scoring system. And therefore, you can interpret it as a parallel structure or mechanism to alert them. Uh to keep them on their toes, and also to uh make sure that they would implement the improvement measures that we've been discussing with them. And also on two point three, on the logbooks, um for escal- for lifts and escalators.
And also, on two point three, on the logbooks for lifts and escalators, they would also have to ensure that the number of inspections would be in accordance with what has been set up. But then, um, also the responsible officers, they would also have to keep the logbooks. And you've also identified some problems. Well, the audit department checked seven from January to December and also the logbooks. And then the audit department would conduct random checks on each and every contractor. And seven contractors were checked and six did not follow the time schedule um, in conducting checks on the number of items in accordance with the schedule. So who would be responsible for checking the number of inspections? So is it the um, the D M Os, the P S As or the um, C S Ts or whoever? So it's not spelled out here. And also, who is the person responsible for that? That is, who is responsible for lifts and escalators maintenance? Thank you. Well, the logbook would have to be filled up by the contractor. So it's the contractor's responsibility, Ms Yong. So the responsible officer is someone from the contractor. The contractor will have to keep the logbooks, right? Assistant Director. Well, the logbooks would be kept in every estate. So it's not kept by the contractor, but then every time when they come, they would have to come to our estate office to get the logbooks. But what about the person in charge? Because in two point three one, the third sentence is saying that the the contractor would have to explain things to the person responsible. Two point three one. The responsible persons, who are they? Well, it's the contractor who would fill out the logbook and then they would have to submit it back to the housing department. But then who's the responsible person? Is he? Someone from the contractor's office or from the estate's office is the H D's. So is the H A's responsible person. So it's been decentralized to the D M O. And then when they um handed back to the D M O, then you would check the number of inspections conducted by the contractor. So there are dedicated personnel in the D M O responsible for checking the logbooks to make sure that the number of inspections would be in line with the schedule. Is that right? Can someone answer this question? Assistant Director. On the logbooks, cap six one eight, well, subsidiary legislation or regulation A. So can the legal, can the legal advisor, um, advise us? Well, on two point three one. Well, two point three one refers to the lifts and escalators ordinance. And it says that under cap six one eight, well, um, article, well. Um, there is a, an interpretation clause on that and provision A and it says that well, the person owning the lift and escalator or anybody who has control of the lifts or escalator in question. So the responsible person is found here. So that's the definition under the law. Thank you. Ms Yong. So who is to answer the follow-up question raised by Ms Yong? Or can I ask that again? So you talk about ownership. So that's the housing bureau, right? But then they have no idea as to who is responsible for that. Or do you have a dedicated unit responsible for inspections and checks? So have you clarified that? So on the number of inspections and also on the monitoring of the number of inspections. So after the release of the report, what are you going to do? Assistant Director, Mr Hong.
Well, let me um clarify that. In fact, I've made it clear. Um, the responsible, well, the responsible persons are from the H A. Every time when um the contractor's personnel came, they would ask the D M O for the logbook because the logbook is kept with the D M O. And they would have to get the logbook in order to fill out the items on the logbooks. Because after the inspection, they would have to fill in the logbook to complete the work procedure. And they would have to sign in as to when and what time they arrived for the inspection. And there are similar items that they have to do. And there are also some inadequacies and therefore there is room for improvement precisely because of this. Because the practitioners are more inclined to working at the frontline to make sure that the machinery would be safe for use. And um, given the inadequacies that have been identified, we have also talked to the contractors. And if you look at the latest quarter and we have checked all the logbooks, they've already remedied the situation. And as they would be converted into digital logbooks, we believe that the situation would improve. Yes, Ms Law?
Thank you, Chairman. Let me put it this way. Well, the, before the completion of the digital logbook system, we are still using this paper-based logbook system. And the logbooks are kept in our district management or maintenance office. That's proper because if they have to submit it on a quarterly basis, if they are kept in the D M O, then of course, our colleagues at the D M O would need to know whether or not certain lifts are problematic. But then the fact that it's paper-based and it's kept in the D M O. And if we need to find out what is happening with individual estates and also individual lifts, that may not be possible. But once the D L B is in place, then from the very beginning would know whether or not they have completed the inspection and whether or not the report has been submitted and what the circumstances are. And therefore, it's not just confined to the D M O, more people will be in the know. And at the beginning of this hearing, I already made it clear. The first step to take is to minimize the need to fill out the forms so that they be able to lock the services that have been provided. Secondly, that would also provide us with the data to identify any problems with the lifts. For example, for a particular lift or a particular batch of lifts, would they be specifically problematic? So through the D L Bs, that would also enable us to do it. Um, Ms Yong, no further questions. Ms Khan.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, the legal, the legal advisor referred to cap six one eight A. That's the regulation under cap six one eight. That is under note four, is clearer. Because back in twenty twelve, when you amended the legislation, you introduced this um well, enhanced version of monitoring. Because in that version, you have the idea of responsible persons. That is whoever is in control of the lifts and escalators will have to be held responsible. And on this occasion, what we are referring to? Is it the H A or the H D? It's the H A. That is the responsible person. And in terms of keeping of a logbooks, well, in part one and part five, such logbooks have to be kept. In other words, if the responsible persons is the H A, then the penalties should have been applied to the bureau. That is, um, is the bureau that should have been responsible. So I don't know whether or not is the correct interpretation. So if the responsible persons are the H A and if the penalties should have been imposed on the H A, then with regard to the monitoring of the contractors, we really need to beef up our monitoring. Or else if the responsible person is the government, then the government will have to be held liable for any problems. Who is to answer?
Chairman, legally speaking, as the ultimate person who is responsible for that, that is the person who is um, um, the owner of the Ellen East, he will have to be held responsible. In other words, we would have additional requirement on our contractors over and above these statutory requirements and for the logbooks that have to be kept for three years. Well, through our contractors, every time after they have conducted an inspection, they would have to report the situation in the form of the logbooks. But then in the audit some inspection, we have found out that there are certain inadequacies or omissions. And therefore, there is room for improvement. But then precisely from that, we have seen that is today, we have the P A C and also, and we have now been able to um, show that whether it's the bureau director or the director, we have to be accountable here. We do admit that there is room for improvement.
I hope that members can see that we are willing to, for the lifts. Uh, we are responsible for, we need, we need to live up to our responsibility. Ms Khan. Can you give us a written analysis on cap six point one eight A? How is to be applied to the current scenario? Because it seems that you've, there's no mention of the penalties in the chapter. And yet, the, what is covered there has happened, like the lack of logbooks. And why is the relevant piece of legislation not invoked? Yes, we can provide, yes, we can provide an analysis. Thank you. Ms Khan, no, no more questions. Any other members have questions on this part? If not, then Ms Yong.
Part three. Thank you. The first question, preface two, says that H A, having assessed all lifts maintained by H D, which has been used for twenty five years or more and have set priority for L M works as at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three of the six thousand and fifty-six lifts maintained by H D. Twenty-three percent of them have been in use in twenty-five years or more, as shown in table seven. And um one in thousand lifts have been used for twenty-five years. And three point three eight paragraph says that based on the current resources, H A can only carry out L M work for eighty to nineteen lifts per year. So now time is limited, we know, and budget is also limited. So how can we, based on the progress of L M program? What would you expect of the progress thus far in the days ahead? Ms Law? Modernization will be carried out continuously. And as you can find in our reports earlier, we will carry on with the work. But the resources mentioned here are not just in terms of the manpower and budget under the H A, but with the large amount of construction work underway, we've only got eleven contractors on our list. The manpower of those contractors, whether you know, there's so much work to be finished and can they really finish them all? That's also one of our considerations, a realistic factor. Therefore, in three point three, not just A, well, where it's mentioned that we will do carry, carry out work on eighty to ninety lifts per year. And if we cannot keep up with the pace, then we will um, try to speed up our work. As mentioned in later paragraphs, that is, there could be enhancement works. And through risk assessment, we will carry out, increase the waiter's score for each lift. In part two, we mentioned that, based on the current situation, if we were to carry on with the L M program as asked by Mr Long, for example, how we're going to deal with it. We would hope that hopefully through with, through collaborations with S three in the future, that will be a good arrangement that they can help us deal with problems more quickly. And also, we can try to compress the time needed as well if possible. Ms Yong. Thank you, Chairman. In three point four, it says that, well, I hope, I think the government does hope to modernize the lifts. Three point four A says that the lift age required for the annual technical assessment for modernization purpose was to be extended from twenty-five to thirty years. So that the number would come down to one thousand three hundred eighty, that is the lifts needed for modernization. But do you think that's a practical solution? We don't want to say that we just try to do the least possible or the, as much as we can. There is a safety issue associated with lifts. I know that you carried out the study in March one twenty to increase the years from twenty-five to thirty years. Do you think that the assessment is realistic and has a compromise safety in any way? Ms Law? Uh, Ms Ho. Yes, that's the recommendation of our consultant and we carefully consider that. As Ms Yong said, we do attach importance to the safety of lifts every day. So many people go in, go in and out of it. And we think that it's more appropriate to keep the year to twenty-five. But that doesn't mean that those with the years of twenty-five would be given priority. There is a basket of factors we need to pay attention to. For example, the usage rate of lifts or for some lifts, their location, because of the location, their utilization rate is lower. But to keep twenty-five as our um factor, I think that is what we want to stick to. We will not consider extending it to thirty years. Ms Yong. As for lift modernization in the um, O M, oh, the O, the M Os and and also P S As, they have various considerations that is as mentioned in three point four C. And three point five. Those are the factors considered. But would you consider providing electronic forms? Because if you were to provide monthly maintenance reports and also other reporting requirements. And also, there's also the half yearly and quarterly assessments. And if there were more forms to be filled in, would you consider integrating them all in an E format? Thank you, Ms Yong. I think uh, going for electronic forms for keeping purpose and storage purpose and review of records is the way to go. And we would move in that direction of providing E formats for all, to replace all paper records, paper-based records. Thank you. Ms Yong. Of the various forms I mentioned, including the performance of lifts and so forth, and also the logbooks to be filled out by the contractors, there could be some overlaps because they are all about the lifts concerned. So I hope that the government can review for the forms required where there are any overlaps in them. Whether you're checking the same sense of information in different forms. And has time be, has time been wasted? Because when you do the checking, lifts have to be suspended for service. So I hope the administration can find out whether there are any overlaps of information asked for in the various forms in relation to lift inspections. And as for note twenty-nine, uh, it says that the D M Os and P S would select a lift for assessment, as I mentioned. And the score of the lift is the norman, normalized score. So you would um, select a particular housing estate. For some P R H estates with block spills in different phases, lifts are selected for assessment for different phases. But faith, but estate A and estate B, they are totally different. Even though they were built the same year, but the maintenance situation or the breakdown of lifts in those estates could be different. If you use a normalized score, would that be not precise enough? Ms Law, for details, I'll ask Mr Hong, Assistant Director, to explain. But the principle is that within a housing estate, of course, lifts would have been completed at about the same time. So we'll select one lift, we'll select one lift in the estate to check on its condition. The normalized score represents the situation of the lifts in that particular estate for reference purpose. And that will help us decide on um, the state of the lifts. Because We may not just replace one or two lifts. We might come up with a comprehensive program. Program, yes. In dealing with the lifts in a particular estate. I think to the residents there, they'll be more, that would be more convenient. So the normalized score doesn't mean that. Uh, from then on, all lifts of similar age in all estates will be given the same score. The score will be just for one particular estate. Mr. Hong, please. Yes, um supplement. In choosing a lift, that will allow us to do more detailed assessment, but each lift will be given a score nonetheless. In other words, each lift will be assessed, but the the particular lift chosen from each estate is for more comprehensive assessment. Ms. Yong, I hope that you can um work or review more the algorithm. To provide a more precise score to let the public know more clearly. The situation of the lips in the estate delivered and then you have a better idea of how the lips are doing. If you just go for too general a score, then that will not be good for safety and maintenance, and that could be a loophole. My next question is three point seven and three point eight about. Assessment criteria for LMTVC. So you will consider various uh. Um, criteria, including. Well-planned manpower and resources, availability of budget and other considerations and commitments. And the LMT vetting committee. In February twenty twenty-three, um discussed the. Suggestion to include fifty-five lifts in LM program for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and also it allow for. Thirty-six other lifts include them in the um LM program. And yet the rationale was not included in the minutes of the meetings. So while we're not a criteria. Used in deciding. Whether this will be included in the assessment or not. Mr. Hong.
As Ms. Yong said, in three point seven A, the score is one factor, but there are the various scores, so. We will look at the uh scores in various districts. Uh, for consideration. By the vetting committee and the committee when assessing the um scores. They will also look at the manpower and resources. There was, there was discussions held. And the other report states that. In our records of discussions. The um. So not enough details are given about the rationale for the thirty-six lifts. We agree with that, so we went back and now saw the colleagues. Involved and they said that there was a, it was a conclusion reached after. Discussions, but looking at the records, we think that we could have done better with the ticking of um. Records and minutes. So we agree that every time. New lifts are incorporated into the program, we would add more remarks. So that people will get more information from the records of the meetings and discussions. So Ms. Law. Just one point. For someone new to um this arrangement for new pair of eyes, looking at this. After, if after the scoring, we decide to add the living to the LM program, that would be simple, but why? Let us not included, then more remarks might be needed to tell people uh what the considerations were. So I agree. So I agree that in the future, the minutes of the meetings will include more such remarks. Ms. Yong.
Chairman, our understanding is that. For some items, it's difficult to quantify. Like manpower, resources and so forth, but we do hope that you can try to be more scientific. So people know what formula you um follow. Why is it that in a lift of similar situation in the next day is not included while another similar lift? Is incorporated into the program. I've also noted that in Gen one, that is your reply to the Secretariat. Part three E. E five, E five, page seven. For technical assessment. Paragraph thirteen, it says that there are political considerations and pledges involved. So in paragraph thirteen, it actually says up to now. It stated that there was a political considerations. So for point thirteen, how do you assess political consideration? And why it said that is this, this line came from you. So you are. Expecting no request from district council and therefore you just drill in what house in what estate. So for paragraph thirteen. What's the point of including this comment? Who would answer? Ms. Law.
I believe that in the past, you will know that in a district, um. Various friends in the district would. Be concerned about the maintenance of lives in estates, housing estates and various district councils or. Friends in the district might. Give us various demands, for example, asking us to speed up some enhancement works or modernization works. We will consider that indeed. Everyone who made requests to us would be considered, but in terms of manpower and appropriateness, we cannot possibly. Accept every single request made. Therefore, we need to um make all sorts of considerations for two demands if they are about. Situations involve are similar, so we need to make a choice and that's what we mean by political consideration or district consideration. In the future, we may continue to face the same scenario, but whether they are political considerations. We would more consider to a particular district, the particular lift. Uh, how much concern there is for the lift concerned in a particular estate or district. In the past, district councils, for example, will say that, well, two or three blocks of buildings would make a constituency. But now with the improved electoral system, each district has been expanded, so maybe in one particular district. Uh, there could be different priorities needed for a single district. So in the future, we will make a reference more to the priorities for particular district and then we can be more specific. Specific and give more details about our consideration here. So I think in terms of the wording, you can. You may say district consideration rather than political consideration. And as for tenants and district council in the future, would you? Add area committee into your explanations as well because there may be people on that committee. Who were concerned about lift safety in an estate. You may want to add that and don't say no request. You may leave it empty uh for you to fill in later and also how many requests have you received? If you have considered that. Then you can, you can also provide an appropriate consultation period for a particular district and they can reply to you within that period. If you don't give them the chance, then they may not be aware of the assessment that you are doing and they may not have the chance to express. Their view to use. I hope that you can improve on paragraph thirteen and let HA have more links with district bodies. And understand more about the needs in a particular district. You want an answer? Oh, yeah? Okay, please. Ms. Ho, Secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Yong, Chairman. I agree. I think the original intention is we want to include views of people in the district. And we can put on record for our consideration in the process of assessment. So I'd like to thank Ms. Yong for your suggestion. We will update. That paragraph and pay more attention to links with people in the district and put in a record what they think, the views of the district. Ms. Ken?
Thank you. I'd like to ask about. Having considered the consultant's report and the administration's response in Gen one is that. You would review whether. The lift modernization programs threshold would be raised from twenty-five years to thirty years. In Gen one, your response is that you consider that the resources needed are relatively limited and so. You will continue to use twenty-five years as the appropriate and prudent arrangement.
In Gen one. In the past three years. In terms of statistics relating to these three. Age groups of lifts and. I'm referring to append, appendix three E two. If the threshold is set at thirty years, seven hundred and seventy-seven fewer left, uh fewer lifts will remain in service. That means if the threshold is set at thirty years and that. Lives uh above the age of thirty will be subject to lift modernization. That means either you replace the lift altogether or modernize it, then if the. Then six hundred and three lifts will be involved. If twenty-five years um are maintained, then um the figure will stand at one thousand three hundred and eighty. Seven hundred and seventy-seven more. If the target is eight hundred per year, that means if the age threshold is not adjusted, we won't be able to complete the LM for all lifts. And they just explained that the condition. Does not. Have much to do with the age of the lifts, but rather uh whether spare parts are still available from the original manufacturer in the proprietary maintenance. So shouldn't the first step be reviewing whether spare parts are available from the original manufacturer? Um, for lifts to be, for parts to be replaced?
Secretary. Ms. Khan has made a very good point. It is true that we should not only have regard to the age of lifts, twenty-five years, thirty years, that's just for our reference, but this is not the, the. Only factor. We also consider how frequently the lifts are used, the size of the housing estate. The number of floors of a building. That a lift is required to travel. These are factors we need to consider. From the consultancy report, it is recommended that um taking the perspective of resources, we can perhaps consider. Um, raising the threshold to thirty years. But having regard to our priority. On safety, we want to adapt, um adopt the same age threshold that is twenty-five years in service. However, there is a basket of factors when selecting lifts to be included in the LM. Paragraph three point eight. The audit. Has noted that in according priority to lifts to be put under LM program. The LMTVC, that is the vetting committee, will have regard to manpower, resources and the budget. I hope that the administration will go by um the factors stated here so that we know. On what grounds they make the decisions. For example, after reading this report, I understand that availability of. Uh, spare parts will form one of the justifications. That means whether you have parts in store. Instead of just looking at the age of lifts, whether it's twenty-five or thirty, so that we understand that the. Age of lifts is not. The only factor. Indeed, we consider not only one factor, but a basket of factors and this will be properly. Documented. Yes, Ms. Khan. Three point one two. Now, as far as evaluation reports are concerned, the audit has found that two lifts did not complete the technical evaluation. The Housing Department needs to remind the DMOs or PSAs to check the data accuracy. If we want to overhaul the lifts. We need to have regard to the data concern. So about the omissions, I want to know whether this. Has to do with the DMOs or the PSAs. Can you give an undertaking? Director Law.
Yes, we reviewed these two cases. Um, they were minor mistakes, unfortunately. But this is documented in the audit report. It involves. The names of the. Block of building being very similar to another, the name of another building in the same district. So there is, there was an omission in data entry. Of course, it is undesirable. We have asked our colleagues to double-check. And make sure that. The system includes each and every lift. Otherwise, there will be an omission in the assessment. That means. The mistake was committed by the DMO, not by the PSA, is that right, Assistant Director? A wrong input of the name of the housing estate. Was it a mistake made by the DMO? Yes, um, it's our colleague's mistake. From which unit or which division? Headquarters, from the headquarters. Um, the spelling was one letter different, hence this unfortunate mistake. Now, would the administration also explain with collaboration with Astrae? Would it help? Prevent um a repeat of such incidents? Secretary, Ms. Ho.
We collaborate with Astrae on research and development in terms of the operation of lifts and electronic components. Now, the lift contains a lot of parts. It's very complicated. Now, if the lift operation. Goes wrong in terms of the speed of ascension or movement. Of the lift. Then the irregularity may be presented in the data and if we're able to identify. That in advance, we can attend the scene in advance and conduct predictive maintenance. With new technologies emerging, we can rely on sensors. To transmit data. We can also have big data analytics in the background. So that we can make comparisons between a normal operation of the lift and the irregularity. That means we identify the normal movement pattern and compare that with the irregularity. This is similar to um, um, medical checkup. We check um our heart rates. Blood pressure, so on and so forth. So that we can. Have the lift repaired as quickly as possible when something wrong is detected. Ms. Khan.
Yes, I support why the use of technology is like a medical checkup, as you said. Uh, I hope that we can make use of sensors and the internet of things to detect errors. My last question is on paragraph three point two one. According to the audit. After issuing a use permit under the LM program. Why is there still a delay? Forty-seven lifts or twenty percent took one to ten days to resume service after obtaining use permits. That is in. B and in C, one hundred and forty-nine lifts or sixty-three percent took eleven to thirty days and D. Thirty lifts or twelve percent took more than thirty days. May I know why? Is it that they need to make sure that it is totally safe before it's.
Is it that they need to make sure that it is totally safe before it's resumed for use by the public?
Assistant Director, now when, before works commence, we first of all hold it the area. In the lift lobby. And after obtaining the use permit, we need to. Remove the holdings at the lift lobby and the landing floors. And after that, we need to conduct minor works at the lift lobby as well. So that's roughly one month after obtaining the use permits. By then, we can complete the whole process. Miss Khan.
That means according to the administration, it will take a month before it's properly resumed after obtaining the use permits. You need to put it down very clearly. Otherwise, there is a misconception that after obtaining the use permit, the lift should be resume its service. The response from the government in three point two four seems to point to that. Now, you gave a reasonable explanation. You want to ensure safety before service is resumed. Miss Law, Director.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank Miss Khan for being so understanding. It is true that we should put it on record that we cannot resume service. Right after obtaining the use permit for the lift. We need to conduct minor works. And meanwhile, we'll consider expediting the progress such as removing holdings, retiring works. Uh we will check the procedures and see whether it is possible to compress the timeframe. I thank Miss Khan for reminding us to put it in black and white. Miss Young.
It's now six twelve. We're supposed to adjourn at six thirty. We're not going to. Extend the meeting. Do you want to start part four now? Yes, it's going to be very quick. Uh Mister Long. For part three, I want to ask one more question. Please do. I have a question on three point one nine. Audit analyzed the shutdown period for the two hundred and thirty eight lifts with L M works completed during the period from twenty eighteen nineteen. To twenty twenty two twenty three. And noted that forty nine lifts had been shut down for more than ten point five to fourteen point five months. According to the audit's analysis and recommendation, has the department. Um device measures to further shorten the shutdown period?
Secretary, thank you, Mister Long, for your question. I think Mister Long is very familiar with the lift operations. Apart from spare parts, there are also electronic components. Say, for example, in aged housing estates, there may be water seepage on the ceiling of the lift machine room. We need to repair the concrete ceiling and that involves the works. Of different, of a different nature. So it's about interfacing of different work processes. Our colleagues will look into that and to further compress the whole um process. With a view to shortening the shutdown period. Now let me quote a figure for your reference, Chairman, in twenty. Twelve, it took about ten point five months to modernize a lift. In twenty eighteen, we shortened the period to eight point five months. Uh some members mentioned that we use the Covid nine nineteen pandemic as excuse. But it was true that there were logistics problems. There was also the R T D operations where the entire building closed off. Those caused the delays. Uh we will strive to um. Work as quickly as possible from now on. Yes, of course, I understand if we can have different works, procedures going in parallel, we. Instead of working in sequence, we should be able to save time. Miss Young, part four, right? I'm going to adjourn the meeting at six thirty. You want to make a start now? Yes, about other safety enhancement measures for lifts and escalators. Part four, four point four eight, one thousand eight hundred and seventy one lifts. Were listed as prioritized items. Seventeen percent of three hundred and eighteen had completed the enhancement works. And then four point eight A response from the government. The government will continue to closely monitor the progress. To ensure that prioritized items are completed within schedule. I want to know how long it will take for all the prioritized items um. To be completed. Assistant Director, four point four B, we already explained that the target is to complete. The works in domestic premises by twenty twenty nine thirty and for non-domestic premises twenty thirty one thirty two. Miss Young. So um you expect complete enhancement works for over ten, uh one thousand lifts within that period? Mister Hong, yes, true. Table eleven. Well, for the number of devices to be installed, there are three entries, three, two and one. About completion of safety enhancement works. Do you mean that um all three safety devices will be installed or just those needed? Director, when it comes to safety enhancement works, we are required to install all three safety devices. So um in table one, you see works completed, that's A and works in progress. B, that means we need to complete both A and B before we call it total completion. That means. All three latest safety devices will have to be installed before we um. Regard the safety enhancement works for one lift to be completed. In theory, it's true, but. In reality, some lifts are already equipped with one or two safety devices, but in concept, you need all three devices. Paragraph four point five, shutdown times, according to the um trial projects. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the shutdown period for lift, each lift. Was around four to six weeks up to thirtieth of June twenty twenty three. Sixteen percent, that's fifty two out of three hundred and eighteen lifts, took more than six weeks to complete the enhancement works. Four point eight A and B, the government would will. Further review the um process to shorten the shutdown period. Um can you tell us more about the review? What measures have been put in place? I will take the question, please, Assistant Director, Mister Hong.
Thank you, Chairman. Normally, it takes four to six weeks. In table eleven, um in the table, some took longer. Because of some technical issues and because of Covid, that's in table twelve. We come, conducted a review. And four point six A, we also talked about the work schedule clashing with the Chinese New Year. Now, we reviewed the work's schedule. We also remind, we've also reminded contractor to. Have all the raw materials ready before suspending the service. And they should, we should avoid having the schedule traversing public holidays. About engaging a contractor to perform the works. Do you provide an indicator for their reference? Say, by how many weeks should they complete the works? And if the time is extended, is there any penalty?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, like other general works, they would be given a time limit and if they um. Exceed the limit, then that would depend on the contractual terms and if there are unforeseen. Um circumstances justifying the delay, then they would be given this E O T. Or else they would have to pay a fine. So have they ever been fined if there is some this. Um extensive delay? Assistant direct, Assistant Director, Assistant Director, Mister Hong. So you will have to um wait till the camera is facing you. Okay, Chairman. On table eleven, or table twelve, well, that one has not been punished because normally there would be. Uh justifications and therefore they would be granted E O T. And also. They would have to, uh four point ten, says that they were, well, as said, the thirtieth of June twenty ten. Um six hundred and seventy uh escalators were inspected. Well, uh out of the um. Well, within three years of the completion of the overhaul, out of the escalators being checked, well. Another one was only inspected after thirty years and also seventy six or fifty eight percent. Escalators had their latest overhaul conducted more than three years, but within six years after the previous overhaul. And um. The H D will continue to um monitor the overhaul work. So I'd like to know the progress so far. And also in terms of the um. The um work done, uh so how you, what are you going to do to ensure that that would be done on schedule? Well, before twenty eighteen, for such a regular overhaul. So after the overhaul is completed within two years, that's during the um, the um. Liability period, well, that does not require any overhaul and then after three years, there would be this overhaul. And by overhaul, that means that the entire escalator will have to be demolished for inspection. So it's not just about whether or not it's working and that would take more time and more manpower to complete one such exercise. And then after that, indeed, the requirement is not that obvious. Yes, there is still this requirement of doing it. Uh within the next three to six years and therefore after twenty eighteen, well, we ourselves issue a new instruction. That is um. Well, after the first overhaul, the instruction is that during the first three years, they would have to be demolished for overhaul. And then the next one would come after three to six years and after we have issued that instruction in twenty eighteen. All escalators have been inspected and overhaul in accordance with that schedule. And for some of the escalators which are not, which have not yet reached the six year deadline, they would be done. And then for the twenty nine years, uh case, well, when I heard that, I was also rather shocked. But then when we checked the records for this particular escalator over the years. Well, it already had this or that kind of problem and therefore in the repairing maintenance records. We noticed that the escalator was um demolished for checking and then it was repaired. And therefore, there was no adverse record and therefore, after the release of the twenty eighteen instruction, that would not happen again. Because we have already rectified that. But then in terms of our records, even though it has completed what needs to be done. You can see that there was one single escalator which has not been overhauled in twenty nine point nine years and that's not acceptable. Well, for um for those that are, that have breached the requirement of the instruction, what would happen? So um. What would be done about it? Would there be any punishment? Well, in accordance with the instruction, our colleague will enforce it. As to whether or not there are penalties, Mister Hong, do you have anything to add? Thank you, Chairman. Well, the instructions are for our colleagues to follow. And therefore, in simple terms, each and every colleague will have to follow the instruction. And for individual colleague who has failed to follow the instruction, we will have to find out the reason. And then in accordance with our normal procedures, he or she will be reminded in order to make up for it. But then generally speaking, after twenty eighteen, we have managed to follow the instructions very diligently. But then in the future, with the twenty eighteen instructions, we can see that all our colleagues have been following that very religiously. And then in the future, we would also be checking whether, to find out whether or not the instruction has been followed through. And if there is any failure, we will deal with it in accordance with the procedures, but then given the clear instructions. And if it's so easy to implement, we have also got the audit report telling us that in the past. If we fail to enforce it very strictly, there would also be circumstances or situations which are not acceptable. Then in educating our colleagues and then giving them the instructions, the instructions will be very clear. And if there is no justification for failing to comply with the instructions, we also have the civil service regulations and also internally, we do have. Uh procedures in place to deal with those cases. Thank you. Sorry, only four, only three minutes left. Well, very quick. Well. Well, given the fact that every time when an escalator is overhauled, it would take four to six weeks, I hope that you would take measures to shorten it further. Okay, on part four, any further questions, Miss Carmen Khan? Miss Khan, if you have questions.
Well, well, on this Friday, we can have another meeting because I've already made it clear that we have to end our meeting by um. Six thirty. Well, it would just take one minute. All right, note thirty nine, says that prior to November twenty eighteen. The E M D instruction allowed adjustments to be made and then for any, for any two successive overhauls, it should not take more than six years. So please take note of that because instructions will have to be followed by civil servants. Do you require any reply? No need. Any further questions from other members on part four? No? Thank you, Chairman. Mister Long, well, from the contract. In relation to the overall program, how many contractors have been changed? Six, altogether six. All right, any further questions on part four? Any supplementary questions from members on part four? If none, if there are no further questions on part four, then our public hearing today has completed. So we hope that the government can. Provide us with written response to the questions raised by members. So after we have completed our work, we'll be submitting a reporter to the council meeting. Okay, so that's all for today's meeting. Thank you. Meeting is now adjourned.